Good evening and welcome to the September 27th regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. This is a public meeting, and if any member of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. If you are on Zoom, when the public comment period opens, use the raise your hand icon. You will be unmuted when it's your turn. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by pressing star nine. Again, you'll be unmuted when it's your turn to speak. If you are in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order, and we will begin with a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded and ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known as, is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat's and other indigenous people from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Okay, and Director Loya, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Commissioner Figueroa?
Present.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Vice Chair Davies?
Here.
And Chair of the State, Alcock?
Here. And at the staff's table, we have Director Loya, Director of Community Development, Senior Planner Joe Matier, Senior Planner Delo Freitas, and I see out there, we've got Emily Sinkhorn, Director of Environmental Services, and Natra Cotry, who is our city engineer. Did I get everyone?
I think so.
Good job.
Okay, time for oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communication, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission action will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward to the podium, please, and state your name.
I'll be brief. Glenn Caldwell, live on Western Avenue, close to this project, but this is unrelated. This is about crime in Arcata. Our truck parked in front of our house below our bedroom window was stolen on the 21st. You may have seen the article in Ken Kemp. It was recovered in the Mad River under the Hatchery Bridge, painted yellow with a T-shirt. Truck is totaled. Arcata Police did come and responded pretty quickly, but that's been the end of it. No further contact from the police. So I don't know what the solution is here. Crime in Arcata is getting worse. It is out of hand. People's windows are getting smashed, people's homes are getting broken into, cars are getting stolen, right and left. In my neighborhood alone, in the last month, there's been tire slashing, car windows broken, another truck was attempted to be stolen, the same week that mine was. So I talked to Chief Ahern, and he's made it clear that his hands are kind of tied by some state law and what else is going on in the city and in the world. And he made it very clear that it's just up to us to protect our property. So we're doing the best we can. We'll give it a couple more years. If it doesn't get better, we're probably gonna leave. And the truck, you know, we actually have a building project right now in the city so that we could get the truck off the street, and now we don't have a truck. So anyway, thanks. Well, we go into the Public Safety Committee meetings, as well as the City Council meetings to bring this point up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Do you have early oral communications? You can go ahead and line up.
Thank you. I'm Fred Wise. Two weeks ago, I lauded the Planning Commission for your years of experience, which I think is over 100, among all of you, and perhaps 150. I'm speaking about something very serious tonight. At the meeting two weeks ago, the agenda item was Consider the Gateway Area Plan with emphasis on the Design and Community Benefits Chapters. What was actually discussed was the RGA proposal for an advisory committee or task force, a possible new district in the Creamery area, and building height. I don't consider the first two things to be part of the agenda at all. This I consider to be a violation of the Brown Act. Things have to be on the agenda. It has to be specific. It has to be recognizable to any member of the public so that they know whether to come to the meeting or not. I actually know of two people who would have come to that meeting if they knew that the RGA proposal was going to be on the agenda. Tonight, the agenda item is Consider the Gateway Area Plan. This has been shown by the courts to be way too vague. It has to, you can't say, provide recommendation. I have a list of five court cases. I'm not a lawyer. I'm sure there's more. It's very, very clear. The reason I bring this up to the commission is, as I've said before, I would like to see things done in a very straightforward fashion. I know of four people who have talked to me about suing the city for process, for violations of the Brown Act and other aspects of process. I don't want to see that at all. I mentioned Los Catos has a referendum, they're putting things on the ballot. I don't want to see that happen. To me, the more straightforward and the more clean things can be done, the better. At the meeting two weeks ago, Chris Richards started to talk about the L Street couplet. The Community Development Director said, "We're going to have it on the agenda tonight." It was not on the agenda that night. I regard this as an infraction of the public input, and I know a lot of people who don't speak or come to the meetings because they don't think they're going to be heard. I hope I've said enough on this, and I hope it doesn't happen again. Again, tonight, Consider the Gateway Area Plan. To give you an idea of what that sounds like to the public, it's as if you said, "Consider development in the City of Arcata." It is that vague to us. At one time, there was a schedule of what was going to be on the different meetings. That schedule seems to have been abandoned. I'm all in favor of discussion, but it has to be on the agenda. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anyone online?
We do. Go ahead, Jane.
And what I have to say has something to do with what Fred was bringing up, because I was trying to figure out when I should attend this meeting, and obviously, not for the first hour or so, but because of the generic nature of the discussion of what's going to be talked about, and then there are at least four or five different items that are included in the staff report, including the Citizen Advisory Committee PowerPoint proposal. It's not clear whether you're ever going to get to it. It wasn't specifically on the agenda. It was mentioned in the report. There are a whole bunch of issues, like the amenities. There are other issues, obviously, building height, but the problem is, I can't even tell when I should be around to comment, or whether I will be commenting, get the opportunity to comment subject by subject. Are you gonna do building height first, and then I can comment on that afterwards before you make a decision? Are you actually going to get to the proposal from RGA? And when would we get to comment on that? We can't present it, obviously, because it's not on the agenda, but it was, we did ask that it be put on the packet. So there's a procedural process problem, that I have no idea which topic I should be presenting comments on, and exactly when I'll get an opportunity to do that. So I think in your, following up on what Fred is saying, I'm not talking about Brown Act issues, I'm just talking about you want public participation. You need to try to identify what your process is going to be in this meeting, and when people should be prepared to comment and on which topic, because it's too broad. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane. Got one more. Go ahead, Patricia.
Um, yeah, I actually am going to be speaking kind of the same of what Fred and Jane kind of brought up, but maybe on a little bit more specific of a note. I was kind of questioning the last Slido. There was no reference to a Slido poll, and I know I was talking to people in the community, and they were really upset that it wasn't listed in the agenda, and they had no idea that there'd be some poll. And I also question the legitimacy of a Slido poll. I know there's, again, doing some research, there's ways of voting more than once, too. And I don't know if you have a Slido poll on the agenda, or a survey on the agenda, again, tonight, but again, I didn't see it in the agenda packet. And so I know there are also people that came in person to the past Planning Commission meeting with, and didn't know to bring a phone or a mobile device. So yeah, I think that is a very, I think the agenda has to be a little bit more specific, and maybe a little bit more clear and concise. I read that agenda packet, and I was kind of frustrated on the looping language, and it was just kind of convoluted, and there's a lot of doublespeak, and it was just kind of a frustrating read. So maybe get somebody to write a little bit more clear and concise agenda packet, and just be more specific on certain items. It'd be helpful to the public, and maybe keep the aggravation level down a little bit from a community's point of view. So anyways, I just wanted to put this out, and I guess the Slido concerns go into, we really do need an independent scientific survey done ASAP. We should have had it done before. So anyways, that's what I wanted to be done tonight, and thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. There's no one else, Chair.
Okay, so there were a couple of things on there that we need to put on a future agenda, so we'll work on that later. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one motion. So the only thing that we have are the last three minutes. The special meeting from August 4th, the Planning Commission meetings from August 9th and September 13th. Do we have a motion to approve all three of those, or do we need to pull any of those? Can someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar for today, including all three sets of minutes.
Oh, second. Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're going to move on to our first public hearing, which is the tree removal permit for Westwood Garden Apartments. And I need to recuse myself. My husband did some work on this job, so I'm going to go in the back room, and the vice chair will take over.
The next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing to consider approving a planned development permit for the Westwood Garden Apartments at 2351 Westwood Court. The chair recused herself, and before we receive a staff report, I'd like to ask if any commissioners have ex parte disclosures. Thank you for that. Can we begin then with a staff report?
Yes, good evening. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner at the City of Arcata. I am the assigned planner. This is a continued item from September 13th, and before you this evening is a plan development permit amendment, tree removal permit, and design review permit. So there's three different permits. The findings that are provided in your packet address all of those. Staff's recommendation is to approve the plan development, tree removal permit, and the design review. First adopt a Class 32, Section 1532, Infill Development Project Environmental Review Exemption. The project does qualify for the infill exemption. The staff report does include detailed findings that support that finding. Included in the action, which is Attachment A, would be the findings of approval and conditions of approval for the project, and those are based on the application material that you'll find as Exhibit 3 of Attachment A. The project's, project location is 2351 Westwood Court. It's off of Westwood Court, that's along Alliance, near the Westwood Shopping Center. And, okay, this is the kind of the existing conditions here. The project that you see here developed, there's kind of three wings of existing multifamily structures. There are 60 existing units, two bedrooms each, plenty of parking out there, there's carport structures. It was built in 1967. The application originally came in as a plan development permit, and the staff report explains that it was based on the planned development combining zone that is associated with the residential high-density zoning district. The combining zone was added by an ordinance adopted by the City Council in 1976. This was developed before, and so there was a further plan development that approved portions of the zoning adoption, that adopted that planned development combining zone. Heather Lane with Steria is just south of this location, and it was very clear that this site was not a part of that planned development. So even though the agenda kind of talks about a planned development amendment, this really is kind of a planned development permit based on the combining zone. So we're kind of amending what was developed already, but then adopted with the combining zone of 1976 action of the City Council. The project is zoned residential high-density. It's, the entire property is 5.2 acres. The project site is 4.5 acres. There is a riparian area associated with Janes Creek that is about 0.7 acres. The total density of this particular project could allow up to 167 dwelling units. That is without any of the state bonuses, density bonuses for affordability, or other additional dwelling units that could have been afforded to them through the accessory dwelling unit provisions of state law. So this is being developed under the highest density that's allowed. So it's within the kind of the minimum, but it's close to the top of that. So 160, or 102 units are proposed, 60 are existing. So it is within that density range permitted for the residential high-density zoning district. They're proposing 165 parking spaces. There'll be a mix of carport covered parking, and then uncovered parking as well. Our ratio of parking is, the standard minimum is one parking space per dwelling unit, and this provides just above that max, or just above that minimum. So the max is two parking spaces, and this would be just above one parking space per dwelling unit. So it is within that parking standard density. Since the application, or in the staff report and agenda went out, there had been some project revisions based on some of the comments that we provided to the applicant and their agent. There is no really substantive changes to that. The biggest changes would be in the landscape plan, and I know that the applicant does have a presentation on that. I have a brief one here that shows some of that. They did hold a public meeting out there with the tenants, and based on that, some of the comments that they have did change some of the amenities that they had proposed. They do include more community gardens, at one point, cornhole and some other recreational activities. There's barbecue picnic tables that are located in what are called common recreation areas. And so the, based on, I believe, on some of the comments that the applicant heard from the tenants there, they did want to have those community gardens, so those were incorporated into the landscape plan. There are two exceptions being requested. They could ask for those exceptions through a minor use permit, but this already had that planned development combining zone on it. So this is a Type B planned development, where they're asking for exceptions. They're doing all permitted uses on the site, but they're asking for some exceptions. The first exception is for private recreational space. For apartments, the standard is 150 square feet, and so that would be an area, if I'm a tenant, that I would have access to store my material outside somewhere. It's not accessible to any other tenants. They're proposing 48 square feet in the form of a patio on the first floor and a deck, balcony on the second floor. So you'll see those commonly throughout the City of Arcata when you have multifamily structures. They're small decks. I don't know of any multifamily structures that have 150 square feet associated private recreation space. I would say most of them are less than that. So this is an exception they're requesting, again, from 150 square feet to 48 square feet. The other exception is the solid waste recycling container or enclosure structure that's located in the northwest corner of the property. There's typically a five-foot setback. They're gonna have a less than five-foot setback there, so both on the side and the rear setback. And so again, these are exceptions that would typically could be handled through a minor use permit and design review, but in this case, it's a planned development exception. And the staff report does identify findings of accepting those exceptions to that. The project includes a tree removal permit. Forty-nine trees were proposed at the time to be removed. Twenty-six of them are greater than 16 inches in diameter, measured at breast height, which is 54 inches above the level of the ground. Twenty-three of those are less than 16 inches. Typically, trees less than 16 inches are not required to have a tree removal permit. I'll get into some of the locations of those trees at this point, but they are proposing to have a landscape plan that does plant up to, I think, 33 trees that they're gonna be planting. I did want to mention that the project does include a combination of bicycle parking. Typically, at a project this size, there'd be 50% of the number of motor vehicle spaces, so that comes out to about 123 bicycle parking spaces that would be required. They're doing close to 100%, it's 150. That's kind of a low estimate. They do have two enclosed structures that can hold between 30 and 40 bicycles, and then there's an additional 80 outdoor bicycle spaces. They're proposing, I just changed the slide up here, they're proposing a circular loop, which would be on the western property line. Right now, that would connect the driveway, existing driveway that goes kind of on the southern portion of there, accessed by Westwood Court, and then it would be a two-way traffic around the entire site. They do have access to both Stewart Court through Chestnut to the north, and then to the east would be Westwood Court. These are the existing carports. They're beginning to be demolished and rebuilt. Right now, they're just single-story, pretty simple structures, and then they're going to develop with new covered parking and dwelling units on top. So that is one way they're adding additional dwelling units to the property without really increasing the building footprint. The purple are rectangles. There's where the different structures, the dwelling units, multifamily structures are between five and 12 dwelling units each. These are all two-story structures. There's 102 dwelling units being proposed. They're all about 413 square feet, one-bedroom apartments. The orange rectangles are additional parking areas that will be there. Again, that will be accessible through the new parking driveway loop that they'll have. This area is the portion of the project that is removing trees. This is a beautiful courtyard area. There's mature landscaping trees that were probably planted back in 1967. I don't know about the trees on the western property line. Those are more kind of a conifer species that we might see. I think Monterey pine is some of those there. These trees are being removed to facilitate the development of the project. Again, 26 of the trees are greater than 16 inches in diameter. Through the referral process, we did contact the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, similar to the Creekside Annexation. We did receive comments regarding a protected species of the white-shouldered kite, or whitetail kite, that is known to feed in the agricultural and open spacelands back there, but also nesting sites in the area, and also they do perch areas as well. So one of the conditions of approval is to have a 300-foot construction and tree removal buffer, and so they will work with, when they do those activities, they'll work with a biologist to identify a nesting site. Apparently, this bird species, the raptor, does nest in different locations, so they are not nesting at this point, possibly. And so next year, when they're getting ready to have their young and mate, they're gonna be nesting possibly in a different tree. So they'll have to establish that buffer based on that, that location of that nesting tree. On this site, you'll see, just on the southern portion, I did outline kind of a triangle to the lower part of that. That is the Janes Creek Riparian Zone. There is a portion of that does come from the east. It does cross Alliance not far from there. The city did recently some restoration work on lands outside of that, that are on the Janes Creek to the east, and then it flows kind of through the property a little bit, and then it starts heading south, next to the Creekside Annexation property. It is a, the creek is a fish-bearing stream there. The project does not encroach any closer to that existing riparian area. It's completely fenced now. There is no development activity moving closer to that. Typically, we do have setbacks, and the project would meet those setbacks for a stream protection area. It is pretty heavily impacted with non-native plant species in there, and the condition of approval is included in the project would be for an enhancement project of that riparian This is a view of the landscaping. Most of the landscaping is within that courtyard area where the new development is gonna occur. The little small rectangle boxes would be the new community garden spaces. They will have playground equipment there. Existing playground is out there, but they are increasing the plant size. Typically, we have for trees, a 15-gallon size. They are gonna start out with a minimum of 25 gallons for those, for those trees. And then there's a number of other shrubs and grasses that are being proposed. The plan is, landscape plan is designed by a licensed landscape designer, and it will meet the state water resources boards for water-efficient landscape irrigation systems. Predominantly, the trees are native species. Here we have a design of one of the carport structures, the new ones. You'll see the open court carport area on the top there and the bottom, and then the backside of that, and the two gable ends. The condition of approval was to require- A condition of approval was to require a belly band, which would be a wider horizontal band on the two gable ends where the exterior stairs are, to break up that, kind of that tall mass there. The belly band would define the first floor and second floor. And then staff is suggesting that there be some vertical architectural features to break up that long horizontal siding on the lower floor of the carport there. There'll be a similar condition of approval for, this is kind of their standard look for this, is an eight-unit, and again, they're between five, eight, 10, and 12-unit multifamily structures. And so this is a version of the eight-unit one. In this particular one, there would be, you know, the windows are symmetrical, there's the balcony there and entrances, so there's not that long continuous concern of unavoidable or unbroken mass, but we do get a little bit of that on the gable ends, and that's where we're requesting that they have a belly band on that as well. The findings do go into more detail on the design element, and if there's any further questions we'd have on, we'd be able to address that. The environmental findings, the, there are five different conditions that a project must meet. The findings do include a discussion on all of those and how those are supported. Part of it is established by a court case, even though the property is over five acres, one of the conditions is that the project site is not greater than five acres. In this case, the project site is clearly less than five acres. So the project does qualify for this exemption. The site that's being developed is only associated with the 4.5-acre portion of the site, not the 0.7 riparian area. The findings that you'll find on Attachment A, Exhibit 1, do include the plan development permit, tree removal permit, and design review permit as well. Some of those are overlapping, and I apologize for any redundancy in that staff report on that. The conditions of approval, I mentioned already, the architectural features breaking up that long continuous siding, James Creek enhancement plan. There's certainly resource conservation policies within our general plan that ask for enhancement of our degraded resources, and this is clearly a case that would do that. We have done some outside that area. There's going to be some proposed on the other side after that property that's annexed will be developed, and so this is all in line with that. There's an access easement that is going to be under further discussion this evening, and that is clearly also a transportation policy, that we do want our neighborhoods to be connected and provide multimodes of transportation. It is kind of an unusual site with the location of it, but it is with the annexation. Certainly, the tenants are going to benefit from any access, and then also outside areas will also provide. We do have the bicycle, pedestrian and bicycle master plan that does identify pedestrian access through a portion of this site to link the west with the east and portions of the community, and then also to Enos Park, which is going to be a future development out there. The tree removal operations, those were suggested, and there are pretty specific findings or conditions there. The applicant has provided us a letter prepared by an arborist that will comply with those already, but they are still a condition of approval there. I mentioned the construction buffer for the raptor, and then we have other standard conditions of approval for construction hours of construction to minimize impacts to the residential neighbors, archaeological inadvertent discovery, dust control, BMPs, things like that. One of the revisions that we were contemplating, and this is kind of an 11th hour, I do apologize to the commission, public members, and certainly the applicant and agent on this, but our staff kind of, you know, decided that, you know, this project, we wanted to ensure that the access trail was developed, and so we proposed, staff proposed a revision to this condition of approval where the new text is underlined. Just before this meeting, our staff was huddling with the applicants and agents, discussing this. They do have concerns about the prospect of developing this trail and implications they would have on maintenance and liability on that. And so I believe that we'll have further discussion on that. The applicants did prepare an alternative condition of approval where they broke, condition of approval B18 into two different sections. They saw that it was really kind of a combination of, one would be that pedestrian and bicycle access, and then emergency access. And so this is one of the suggestions that the applicant has done. I know the applicant does have a prepared statement, presentation for this evening, so I'll try to wrap this up so we can move on to their presentation and public comment and any discussion that the planning commission may have. Again, our recommendation would be to approve the project, adopt the environmental exemption, Class 32, and then adopt the action that in Attachment A, Exhibit 1, 2, and 3, pending revisions to the condition of approval that you'll find in Exhibit 2. I'm going to ask the director if he has any questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Joe, can you flip back one slide? I just wanted to add that, you know, barring a couple of typos and some minor word revisions that, you know, we would recommend to the B18A and B, our staff is in support of these conditions, and we feel like they do accomplish the objectives that we originally set out for. Given the clarification that the applicant will, you know, build the trail, you know, to those specifications, I think that, you know, these recommended modifications to the conditions can be supported by staff. I can give you more detail, if you're interested, on what those are, but I did just want to highlight that the changes here with some, you know, minor typo modifications and slight modification in the way the language is written would be supported by staff.
And if I may, Chair, I apologize. I did want to mention that very little public comment was ever submitted to us. We did hear more public comment on the previous meeting when it was originally noticed, but I did receive two comments, and I forwarded them to the planning commission through their email. So I do want to put that into the record that will include those public comments. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Joe. I'd like to open the hearing to the public. Yeah, yep. I was just going to say per our usual, before I open it up, do any commissioners have any questions of staff? Judith, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a number of questions, and you would think that we wouldn't have any questions left after that very long proposal, but I will. The first one has to do with the riparian enhancement area and a condition of approval that would require the development of a riparian enhancement plan. Staff recommended that the applicant actually develop that plan in conjunction with the other riparian land-owning neighbors. And given the fact that right next door, that rather large piece of land will be put to purposes which the city has no idea of yet, what would be involved in creating a condition of approval that would require that that enhancement plan be developed and executed with the riparian and nearby adjoining neighbors prior to approval?
That condition of approval was not intended to require them to that collaboration.
And that, what would be involved in requiring that the plan be developed and executed before the approval could take place?
Yeah, if I can maybe jump in on that. I don't think that the city can condition the project in a way that the applicant doesn't actually have the ability to enact the condition. So if we require them to coordinate with Cal Poly, for example, on that restoration, there's no way that the applicant can cause that to happen on their own. That would require Cal Poly's agreement. So I don't think that we can require conditions that they don't have the ability to effect.
Okay, so if we felt that that was important enough, the commission's alternative would be to deny the project, is that correct?
I am not prepared to off-the-cuff be able to answer whether or not that would be sufficient to deny the project, but you could certainly entertain that as a discussion.
Second question is, the report mentioned a stormwater detention pond somewhere on site, and maybe staff at some point could point us out where that would be, and also explain how the stormwater plan would avoid potential impacts to flooding in James Creek. That would really help us. And maybe someone could also point out where the added community gardens in the landscape plan would be. That would also be helpful. And identify which traffic study concluded that there would be no significant impacts on traffic. I know that this project was not included in that seven-project traffic study that, you know, we keep referring back to from a few years ago. So I'd love to hear about that. And also, I'd love to hear from staff or the applicant whether there was any consideration of a project that would be somewhat scaled down so that there would be no parking in the interior of the project, which would then not require an access road behind, which could then conceivably save some of those big trees.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, at some point, and it doesn't need to be now, but I'd sure like a lot more clarity about Option A and B on this public access. I don't quite have the visual on it. I don't know where Westwood Court is, for example. So if now's not the time, I'd be happy to wait till later, but I'd like to exactly know what the difference between those two are.
Yeah, we can certainly take that up.
Does staff want to address that now, or?
Yeah, were there any other questions to add to that? Then we can take all the questions up at once.
Go ahead, Christian.
I've got some questions, yeah. I actually specifically requested additional information from Director Loya regarding the stormwater-related aspects to this project. Didn't receive anything. But yeah, just questions in respects to stormwater. You know, what we're proposing here is just replacing a culvert to essentially somehow treat stormwater issues on this site with the new net impervious surface and reworked impervious surfaces associated with this project. And we are proposing pervious pavement, but I'm not certain whether or not if, under our MS4 permit and also our understandings of how we actually operate and maintain pervious pavement. It's always a big question for me in regards to the stormwater world and how we actually do O&M on that. But yeah, I'm just trying to understand, you know, where are we proposing to treat stormwater? Are we just, you know, we're still going to be inputting stormwater into James Creek and not treating it on-site and allowing for, you know, infiltration or bioretention or so forth, especially a large parking lot that we have out there? So, just that little corner. So, yeah, there's just some information there, and also in respects to the riparian enhancement plan as well. You know, does this open up the door, again, on this project in regards of consultation with Fish and Wildlife and the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board in respects to enhancement in the riparian area and its effects on waters of the state and also waters of the U.S. in regards of potential temporary impacts associated with enhancement activities? You know, just even considering access, for instance. The other piece, too, is on the five-unit buildings. You know, the question about the long continuous walls to be avoided. It appears that there is a long continuous wall on the five-unit structures, at least on the plans that we received. Will this be resolved? And that's it for now. Thank you.
Anybody else have a commission question for staff?
I just was looking for those letters, and I guess I missed them. Did they come later this, today, or?
Those were forwarded by email this afternoon.
I might have missed it, but is there going to be onsite management?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. And I was also wondering, there was going to be some senior housing? I was wondering if there would be a ratio of senior housing to the student housing and then the current multifamily units?
I'm not aware of any process that the applicant's using to determine age or who's going to rent there, but you could maybe ask them.
Okay. And then also, I was wanting to know the average size of the 26 proposed trees that were over 16-inch in diameter. I had hoped to get down there to look myself, but I wasn't able to, so I'm hoping that that can be addressed.
The average height of the trees?
No, size, diameter. So I know that there's 26 that are greater than 16 inches, but how big are these trees that are going to get cut down?
I don't know that we have the actual size of the trees.
There was a survey that, the plans do look at that, but I don't think there is necessarily an Excel spreadsheet that does the averages of those that are being removed. You know, we probably could get that information to you because it is part of the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the individual tree sizes are in there, but we don't have an average, so it could be calculated. So Chair, did you want us to go, or Vice Chair, rather, do you want us to go through these individually?
Please, yes.
Okay, who wants to pick up the riparian enhancements? And question?
I think we addressed Commissioner Mayor's question about, could there be a condition of approval to require collaboration with off-site property owners? And we said no, we cannot compel the applicant to do that. There is a question about, I'm going to flip back. Okay, stormwater management, that's on the first page of the, let me see what sheet. Storm water management and the city engineers here as well, but it's Sheet 1.0. They do have the permeable pavement areas, they have the areas where there's going to be rain gardens and other low-impact designs. They're spread out through the project area. The project does require, every project in the city of Arcata and Humboldt County, for a matter of fact, requires compliance with MS4 requirements, and that is the treatment of stormwater. So there are, depending on what type of project you have, there are certain requirements. And so this project is required to meet that. So not only the, I think, actually, I'm going to let the engineer, because he's more well-versed in that, I'll let him. in that, I'll let him.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners and the members of the public. We have received the building permit application with the plans they have shown, so they have to comply with MS4 requirements, and they will. And they have submitted the plans, it's under review. We will not be approving the building permit unless we know for sure that the project meets the MS4 requirement. And then the culvert that we mentioned we are replacing is the damaged storm drain pipe at the property, and we are aware of that. It's collapsing, so that is a part of the project, they will be improving that.
And then can you also address the pervious pavers maintenance, since you have the mic?
It is in the private property, so the pervious pavement, if they are proposing, I have not seen in detail if they have proposed that or not. If they are proposing, it will be maintained by the property owner, not by the city.
Yeah, are we going to have an agreement with them that they maintain it in perpetuity? You know, as every treatment BMP is required to be maintained in perpetuity in regards of the MS4 and PDS requirements?
Currently, we are not enforcing that, but definitely we can look into that as our review process of our building permit when we approve the project.
I'm also seeing the applicant's agent about to jump out of his chair, so I think they'll address that as well, but I do think we can address that as a condition on the MS4 permit. There was a question about the plantings. While Joe is pulling that up, I wanted to draw your attention to the sheet 2.0 on packet page 52, I think it says?
52?
Yeah, I believe so. It's an 11-by-17 sheet that is entitled "The Tree Removal Mitigation." So that has some information on where the trees are being removed, and the planting plan is on packet page, too small for my aged eyes to read. I think that says 66. Packet page 66 is a planting plan, identifies the species and the locations of those species.
I believe that Commissioner Mayor was asking about the location of the community gardens, and if you see this view here, community vegetable garden beds. So they're inter-dispersed amongst the common open space areas of the development. This was one of the project revisions that came in after the staff report was published. This is a revision. You can see there's quite a few garden spaces there. Again, this was based on community input of tenants out there and as designed by a licensed landscape designer.
In terms of the traffic study, we did have a traffic study by W Trans that demonstrated at least minimally that there were no impacts related to the exceptions from the SEQA exemption. The city engineer can speak to the revisions to the traffic study that have been requested to satisfy the conditions of approval that improvements related to level of service and/or other traffic safety impacts that may be identified are done to the satisfaction of the city engineer, so he can maybe describe a little bit about what those are.
Thank you. So we did receive a draft traffic study for the project, and after reviewing that, we find it was not completely to our satisfaction, so we provided comments. So as a part of the condition of the project, we are asking applicant to complete the traffic study to our satisfaction, and whatever mitigations are put in the traffic report, they have to adhere to those conditions and requirements in the traffic study. And mainly our concern, one of the main concerns, there were multiple comments that I don't have in front of me today, but one of the main concern was, they have analyzed the existing conditions with the project, but it was not analyzed with existing condition with project plus the future growth down the road in 10 or 15 years, what would happen at the project intersection. So we have asked them to do that, and they are in process of doing that.
And I wanted to point out that the city engineer was using the term mitigation in the vernacular, not in the sense of SEQA. These would be conditions of approval for a SEQA exempt project. In terms of scaling down the parking, I might ask a follow-up question to that. I think the intent was simply to reduce the amount of surface area that's covered. The parking is within the parking standard, and I'm going to ask Joe to confirm that the new parking is to be decoupled from the units, so there's some incentives there for alternative transportation, but it is within the parking range. So can you speak to that?
Yes, the project does not include any decoupling of parking at this moment. It was a conversation that we had on kind of more other thoughts throughout there. We definitely suggested it through other projects and stuff like that, but there is no recommendation for a condition of approval by the city to decouple parking there, and there is no proposal from the applicant to do that at this point. Sorry about that confusion there on that.
I stand corrected. But can you address the range of parking, though? Where they land in the range of parking allowed for on the site?
So the number of parking spaces, they're providing 165, and that's a combination of covered and uncovered parking spaces. At 162 units, they could have a maximum of 123, 324 parking spaces. So they're providing 167. They're providing just over one parking space per dwelling unit. That's our minimum standard. The maximum standard is two.
In terms of the riparian enhancement and whether it reopens permits with the water board, to the technical details, I'll rely on our environmental services director, but yeah, it probably would require additional permitting to get in there and do the riparian enhancements. I think primarily what we're looking at is, you know, above high-water plantings and invasive removal, that sort of thing.
Good evening, Commissioners. Emily, St. Gordon Environmental Services Director, I think Director Loya spoke to just what I was going to say. There really may be water board permits needed at the scale of this enhancement plan that we were thinking of really looking at native plant planting, invasive species removal at that scale and not of changes to the creek bed itself. But those would be, you know, permits and approvals that the applicant would be, need to work through. Thinking about also just the public access easement that is being discussed, and we can speak to more, I can certainly see benefits to planning that trail with the enhancement plan itself. So I think those can go together.
May I ask a follow-up on that? Then are you suggesting that the trail would go along the edge of that riparian zone there?
Yeah.
And is that typical? Does that fit? I mean, is there enough room there, and it wouldn't be damaging to the watershed or the creek, or, you know?
Yeah, I think the city would really hope to work with the applicant for the design of that trail, but as envisioned now, the key benefit and key goal is to be able to connect current and future residents at this location and members of the public to connect from Alliance Road towards the west and towards the parcel to the west that has been annexed and planned for future development. And within the city's municipal code, foot trails are allowed, you know, use within environmental buffer areas, and we have many examples of, you know, low-impact foot trails and paved trails within and, you know, adjacent to our riparian corridor. So where exactly that will be would happen in the design phase, but as is included in your packet, it's really envisioned being on the, as furthest, you know, east that we can be away from the creek, as sort of indicated on what you're just looking at now. Thank you for pulling that up.
Are you saying that that darker band right there would be perhaps the public access?
Yep.
And it would go all the way out to Westwood Court, therefore the public could walk down Alliance, take Westwood Court, and then hit this trail to get up to further western properties?
Correct, and that is the intent. Part of our department's original comments during the referral period was both for current and future residents to be able to have a more direct access to Ennis Park, and as well as fitting in with the, just thinking strategically for members of the community being able to traverse east to west through Arcata.
So if this is a condition of approval, yet it hasn't been designed, how do we know with confidence that something will for sure happen there?
Yeah, I think, well, both in the condition, as it was written or discussed, that the easement would need to be accepted by the city council, so that is, you know, one component. And we have also, I believe, and Planner Mateer could speak to this more, have written it as a condition of final approval for the project of working towards, working with the city to find an adequate design and location for that trail.
So just really quickly, Emily, we're talking in respects, you know, that the dark line appears to be the 100-year baseline flood elevation. Are we proposing something that would be, I hope, above that, so we're not looking at hydromodification?
Yes, so that is our intent. And so whether that is, you know, right up against or part of the existing paved area as it is now, I think that's where we really will need to be more in the design phase to ensure that it can be a feasible and, you know, maintainable trail into the future.
Sounds good.
Were there any other questions?
Yeah, let me consult, I think we had one more, and maybe we just addressed it. There was, where is the access to the trail? I think we satisfied that.
I feel good about all that.
That was covered.
And then in terms of the concern about the long continuous wall in the other buildings, I think the answer is yes. The condition to break up the design a little bit would follow with that as well. And then I think that's all the questions. Were there any outstanding questions that we didn't answer? Or at least address?
It sounded like my questions could be addressed by the developers.
In that case, I'd like to open the hearing to the public. Per our usual protocol, the applicant will have the first turn to speak. Your time will not be limited, but I would ask that you be succinct, and the applicant is also afforded an opportunity to rebut or respond at the end.
My name is Kevin Dobell with Lakos Associates. We are the agent for the Strombecks. We will, thank you to staff, and we really appreciate having an opportunity to hear your questions. We believe we might be able to answer those for you tonight. We are going to abbreviate our presentation tonight. I know you have a long agenda. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick overview of the building locations on the site. The beige rectangles are existing apartment buildings. The blue are the 12 new apartment buildings, which contain 102 apartments. These are averaging in size of 416 square feet. Next slide, please. Thank you. The project shown in sort of this off-orange-yellow color is the recreational open space. There's just over 8,000 square feet of recreational open space proposed for the project. There's also, the green rectangles represent the permeable paving, which would be installed in the parking areas. I will speak to that just in a second regarding the maintenance of those facilities. Next slide, please. The project site does include five separate bio-retention areas and additional stormwater retention areas that are included within the open space landscape areas. These bio-retention areas have been designed through a stormwater control plan that was submitted to the city. We do have calculations, and we are treating all of the new or replaced impervious surface with this project. And as it relates to the maintenance of these facilities, according to the Low-Impact Development Guidelines, this is a regulated project, which requires that stormwater BMPs be maintained by the property owner. There will be a maintenance agreement between the city and the property owner. There will be annual inspections and monitoring reports submitted to the city in compliance with your MS4 permit. Mechanisms for maintaining permeable pavement, just to answer the Commissioner's question, generally involves sweeping or vacuuming those areas at least once a year. It's pretty common for open parking lot areas to also have the sweeping and vacuuming. So that's typically the best way, and you have to stay up on it, you have to do it regularly so that they do not clog, but they do function properly. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide? Thank you. This is the tree removal plan. We did not calculate the average size. We did provide a table to the planning department that showed the number of trees and their size that would be removed. I apologize, I could not come up with an average size off the top of my head. I would say probably somewhere between 20 inches to 22 inches in size if I had to just pull an average out, but that is information we could be happy to provide to the planning department. There are 33 new trees that are going to be planted, and we'll talk about that a little bit in the landscaping. Next slide, please. This diagram here shows the circulation of the project. It is a two-way, 24-foot-wide street that loops through. It provides connectivity to the two dead-end roads that currently exist on the project that serve the residential apartments. This circulation pattern was designed in a manner to actually gain access to the rear of the property. We've worked with the fire department on the width of the road and the locations of the hydrants and the location of the access, so that we know that we have safe access for emergency responders on all sides of the buildings. As staff mentioned, there are 165 parking spaces, 106 of those are new, 83 of those are new bike parking spaces. Next slide, please. We did have a traffic report prepared. They analyzed two intersections, the intersection of Alliance and Westwood, and the intersection of Stewart and Alliance. It was found that there would be an increase in trips per day, but the level was not significant, and it was found that the queuing of traffic and the traffic volumes would still allow these intersections to operate adequately. We have received comments from the city engineer. We have asked our traffic engineer to provide a response to those comments, so we are currently working on that. We are in agreement with the condition of approval that's been presented. Next slide, please. The site amenities, I just wanted to mention that our clients had met with the residents of the Westwood Apartments last Tuesday. They held a meeting, they talked about the project with them. It was determined that some changes in amenities would be proposed. One of the outcomes of that meeting was actually the community gardens. Next slide, please. So the amenities for the site, basically, in these open areas, there will be bike racks, picnic tables, barbecues, benches, and raised community garden beds. Next slide, please. So this is one that I hope that could help answer the Commissioner's questions about the trail access and the dedication of an open space easement. Obviously, when we originally proposed this, our client had preferred to donate the .7 acres of land that's riparian to the city, so the city could actually do what they needed to do with it. The city doesn't seem to be interested in accepting that land in fee, but with the approval of alternate condition B18A... of alternate condition B18A, you would be basically requiring the applicant to submit and record an open space easement, so that access to the trail and the trail and the maintenance of that area could be provided. And we think that this is a fair compromise. So we're requesting that condition B18A be considered tonight. Next slide, please. The landscape plan, we had prepared to talk about the landscape plan. I think what we will do is we'll just leave it for questions. Eric Strombeck is here tonight to answer those questions, if you have some. Next slide, please. I'm going to go ahead and just leave this one slide up here. This is probably one of the longer buildings, I think, Building 1. Oh, this is a eight-unit building. Would you mind going to, next slide? Is that the longest? Yeah, 14-unit building. This is the longest, we think. We'll go ahead and leave this slide up here in case the Commission wants to talk about how the massing and the long horizontal wall might be broken up. I would like to have our client actually speak to that as well, because they're going to be the ones that are going to be building it. Lastly, I wanted to invite Steve Strombeck up to the podium, so he could just speak to you. Steve will be, Steve and Eric will be constructing the project. They are the property owners. They will also be the managers of the project, as long as they maintain ownership. Steve?
Thank you, Kevin. Good morning, or good evening, I'm Steve Strombeck, I'm the owner of the property. And I kind of want to give a little history about my, what I've done in the city of Arcata for the past few years. In 1994, I purchased, I purchased a property at 115 Seminole Boulevard that I call Meadowbrook Properties. At that time, Alice Harris was the, she was the general manager at the time, and with her cooperation, she said, Steve, she said, "We have over 500 police calls at this, at this location." She said, "We really need some help." And from that time on, since I bought it, that one, in that one year, we got it down to, I believe it was under 10 or 12 police calls. So I worked with her, we ended up building 52 new units there on that site, as well, with her help. Since then, I've added, I just want to let you know, I've added 185 new units in the city of Arcata, and I've remodeled over 400 units in the city. And I currently have over 100 units that are either low or very low income in the city of Arcata, and so we were probably one of the few private individuals that actually does that type of work. Over the past 28 years in Arcata, I've, I've worked hard to provide quality housing in a wide range of, for a wide range of income levels. And I, and I have a letter from the Department of, the DDH, you know, Department of Health and Human Services from the, from the county. And I just kind of wanted to read this letter, because I think it was, I think it just kind of tells you, tells you about how we operate, because we do end up renting to some of these folks. It says, "We at the Department of Health and Human Services and Mobile Engagement Program want to say thank you. You have been an important partner and continued and contributed to the success of so many of our clients. Our clients who often struggle with mental health disabilities or, or no rental histories and long-term homelessness frequently experience stigma and discrimination. They can linger on the streets for years without the opportunity to even be considered when applying for housing. Over the past five years, even in such a competitive rental market, Strombeck Properties has given so many of these vulnerable people a chance and the opportunity to rent their own place at one of your properties." So I just want to let you know, we love working with other agencies. We work with the Arcata Housing Project, and we, I think we do a great job of not only managing, but of maintaining our properties as well. So I'll, I'll close with that, and if you have any questions, I'll be willing to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Just in closing, our request tonight is a reduction in private open space to 48 square feet per unit. We're also requesting tonight a modification to condition of approval, B18, to be broken into two conditions. B18A regarding the dedication of public access and open space, and B18B, which is the emergency access gate that would be installed on the westerly property line for emergency vehicles and first responders. With that, we would just like to have an opportunity, if there are questions that we can answer, please feel free to ask us. We're here to provide information and ask, and answer questions when needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was wanting to ask a question. So during the last Planning Commission meeting, I think there was at least one community commenter that was concerned about the current family units and how that might be affected if they're overrun by students, and it's my understanding that you're also going to be providing senior housing, and I was just wondering if there would be some kind of ratio or what that might look like.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, so, no, there's no senior housing with this particular project, and it is market housing, and so we have, we have families, I mean, we, you know, we rent to any and all people, so I can't, it's not student housing, and it's, so it's, it's for anybody who wants to apply.
Thank you.
Did any other Commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Could I just clarify that you folks will be doing onsite management as well, correct?
Correct. We have onsite managers for each, each of our properties.
Thank you. Sorry to make you get back up.
Okay, we can open this up for public comment now. Public speakers will have three minutes to speak. We'll take comments from people in the room first, and then on Zoom. If you're in the room, please line up, and we're ready to take your comment.
Yeah, David Berryman, I live over there. I watched the podcast from last week, and a lady I was talking to, she talked to you something about rats being packed up, and with a remark I made to her, that you, people are like rats, you stuff them too close together, they start killing each other, and she remarked, sometimes they kill themselves. I remember a lady that lived in the converted motel right in front of us there did just that. Apparently, she got the inner rope and snapped, and she set the apartment on fire with her inside, she burned to death. Very grisly event. Also like to talk about inflation. There are many factors that go into inflation, and an interesting thing is, most countries use the price of a home as part of their inflation figure. Some places like the United States are using rent costs, and at the current state of rent things, rents can go out of control pretty darn fast. But the main thing I want to talk about, of course, I'm nobody, nobody remembers me, but I was the one that coined the term "trails fascist." In other words, people, all they got to do is say trail, they get what they want, and nobody else counts. I'm totally against this trail you put through there. I mean, those of you who looked at that, why do you think that fence is there? Why do you think that big, heavy gate is there? People used to go through there all the time. You know what? People's cars were getting their windows smashed out, they were getting their CDs and other stuff stolen. You put that trail in there, and that same situation, they just clean up there by the Department of Education, is going to happen there. You're going to get up in the morning, you're going to see trash everywhere, you're going to see needles, you're going to have vehicles getting broken into, and I am saying, unless this city is willing to post a cop there from sundown to sunup every night to make sure this doesn't happen, no, I want no access through there.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy, and I live in the apartments that are being affected there. I do want to thank Steve for having the open meeting with the tenants to share the plans, but I have several concerns, and part of it that has been brought up is the traffic I agree that there has, it is lacking, because if you try to go on Alliance Boulevard and the corner of Westwood Court, anywhere between 4:30 and 6:30 at night, just count the amount of not only cars, pedestrians, skateboarders, children, people that are running and jogging, it's a well-used avenue for a lot of people. And specifically, the intersection of Foster Avenue, which wasn't in, I didn't see any of that, Foster Avenue and Alliance, and then Westwood Court and Alliance, that would be severely impacted. And I invite the members of the Planning Commission to do their own informal survey. Go down there between 4:30 and 6:30, try to turn left from Alliance into Westwood Court. It can be difficult, and as a pedestrian trying to go up to the west, Western Avenue, man, sometimes it's like a game of Frogger. You're having problems getting through there. Now, take that current situation and multiply it by three, because that's what you're going to be doing. You're going to be impacting 60 units that are currently there and having 162 units. That's, my math is pretty close, it's multiplied by three. So that is definitely a concern. You know, I wanted to know a little bit more about who did the traffic survey and what the conclusions were, because I really am concerned about that situation. Also, the, the composition of the current people that are there, it's families, it's children, it's seniors, and I just can't see that having 102 more units. Basically, I know where Mr. Strombeck is pointing to, and it's because of the university expanding. There is a need for more housing. I don't want to fight City Hall. I don't, you know, I can't stop progress, but can we slow it down a little bit for those that live in the community and, and work here to support the students and you folks? And just be more, thinking 102 is too much, and maybe throw some two-unit, two-unit apartments in there instead of 102 cookie-cutter student housing.
Thank you.
My name is Ann King Smith. I'm a longtime resident of Arcata. I was on the Planning Commission when the general plan was developed. I just want to clarify, I definitely support infill and definitely support the need for more housing. When I was on the Planning Commission, we had something called preliminary review, and the developer would bring a proposed project to us, sort of sketched out, as it were, without a lot of fine tuning, and sort of ask the Commission, I think, is this appropriate for this area, or is it not? And it was very, very useful. I wish it had been done with this project. I don't think the project review should have gone this far without some sort of preliminary review. The city of Arcata, this is a little blunt and a little negative, but I feel the city of Arcata does not need any more Motel 6-type housing. We're just inundated with it in that neighborhood, and so it's not, my comments don't concern the number of units, it concerns the, the design, really. I think we would have learned, and specifically are referring to Sunset Terrace, I think it's called, on Foster Avenue or Sunset Apartments, that could have been an amazing lot. It could have had multi-stories to the north, and it could have had tremendous open space in front, and then the people there would have had more of a sense of community, more of working together, and not feel quite so compressed. And I feel the same way about this lot, that the housing could be reconfigured to be primarily on the north, on the east, perhaps on the southeast, with a large functional welcoming open space that people can enjoy and not have such of a feeling of compressed housing. I know it means multi-story, I know it means more expenses, expense, but I think it would be much more desirable development, and it wouldn't be so cookie-cutter. So I just want to say to the Planning Commission that we don't have to tweak and accept every project that developers come to with us. We can ask for redesign, and just because it sort of satisfies the code or the general plan and the need for housing, does not mean that we, we as a planning commission, you as a planning commission, can ask for different variations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say I admire Anne's eloquence. I also am in favor of housing in Arcata, as can be done. I consider this project to be poorly designed. What I've given you there is a typical apartment view. You notice that when you walk through the front door, you walk right into the kitchen sink. Counter there is a foot wide. I suggested you might want to switch the window and the door, but that's up to the applicant. I consider this project to be a dinosaur. I certainly hope we don't see projects like this in the future. It's kind of 1980s style with the outside wooden stairway. The trees, I've been to the site, I strongly encourage all of you to go to the site, it's a really precious, beautiful site. The trees, I would say, the ones to be removed are about 22 or 24 inches, but there's one tree that's about yay big. If this were designed as a four-story building, I think none of the trees would have to come out, but that's not my call. The staff says that there's two bicycle storage containers for 30 or 40 bikes. On the plans, there's one, it's 144 square feet, which seems very inadequate for 30 or 40 bicycles. Typically, you need about 800 square feet for that many bikes. The apartments have gas heat, ugly wall heater. I think gas heat is on the way out, you might want to look at that. On page 57, and only on page 57, there's storage spaces, they're scattered around the property, five feet tall, five feet deep, four feet wide. I'd like to see what they actually will look like. I imagine them to be plastic storage structures, I don't know, but there's 120 of them. They're not on the elevations. There's no solar panels, no electric car charging. There's 202 bedrooms with three ADA parking spaces, one van plus two ADA, additional ADA. The minimum for private recreation space, they're asking for 48 feet. I'll remind us that it is one and a half sheets of plywood in size. The gardens are in the common recreational space, which makes that smaller. People will get an average of about 30 square feet per person, size of one sheet of plywood. If the university builds any adjoining property, it may build tall, it would be great to have the trees there as a buffer. The architect is listed as Humboldt Drafthing Services, I don't think that that is an architect. The, I also believe that a project that is made up of 102, 416 square foot is not appropriate for Arcata at this point, at this juncture of time. That's, I've got more, but that's good enough for now. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Adam Taylor. I live at Westwood currently. I'd like to comment, some people have made some comments that I agree with, specifically that infill is important for Arcata. This is a wonderful, precious place to live, and the design does not take into account the existing buildings whatsoever. It sees them as an obstacle to build around. You may notice that essentially the buildings that exist now are walled with other buildings approximately 12 feet away. The tenants that live there now have access to light on one side of the building, we will all be in shadow. The design, you will notice, is somewhat of a horseshoe shape. It is so that people get sunlight throughout the year as the sun changes across the sky. I think there is a wonderful project that can be done on this site, I just do not think this is it. Also, I noticed that one of the zones that is for water retention is actually at a high point in the parking lot. There's probably a lot of weird stuff like that that you don't know if you haven't visited the site. I invite you to come to the site, talk to some of the people that live there, who have experienced weather there, that know what happens throughout the year, and I'll walk the site with you and tell you what happens, because there are areas that flood every year, there are areas that don't flood, there's a large drain in the middle of the lawn. I don't know that any- I don't know that any of that has been accounted for, but please take into consideration the people that live there currently and will live there in the future, because their quality of life is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Raylena Crichton. I'm also a current resident of Westwood Garden Apartments. 13 months ago, Westwood Garden Apartments was purchased by Steve Strombeck and Strombeck Properties by Marty Conti, who was actually gifted it. He was the old maintenance man and continued to be the maintenance man up until he sold it to Steve Strombeck, which marked it as the last independently-owned multi-unit building in Arcata. All multi-unit properties are owned by Steve Strombeck, Kramer, or Danco Properties, which effectively isn't technically a monopoly, but they do do a very good job at coordinating their market rates. In this proposed plan, there are 103 new one-bedroom apartments, which are divided among a total of 12 buildings within a 60,000-square-foot area. This is taken from the city of Arcata's GIS map tool. The design follows the city's ordinance, which keeps buildings a minimum of 12 feet away from existing structures and really not an inch more. In this proposed plan, existing tenants would be directly sandwiched between one or two buildings, depending on their location. So, the personal use space is not necessarily an issue of personal use, this is my patio, this is an issue of privacy, both visual as well as access to light. You know, if you look out your window, 44 of the current 60 units would have a direct view of a wall or another tenant's window. In an effort to seek a balanced benefits, both for the developer and the community members, we ask you to reject these plans, in place of ones to include density through increased height and a reduction of overall buildings. Building placement should be recessed away from existing buildings to preserve and protect the quality of life for current and future residents. The green space in this community area would be diminished by 80% in the current plan. This is not only a point of quality of life for tenants, it's also a serious consideration for water runoff from roofs and paved areas. While we appreciate the consideration of water runoff, or the inclusion of landscaping in the proposed plan, our community would greatly benefit from food gardens, plots to be shared and managed by tenants, but the light needed to make this viable would be greatly reduced, if not altogether taken away by the building sprawl in the current plan. There would be a minimum of two years of construction with no assurance to balance the reduction in amenities and quality of life for current tenants. We request the developer to sign a community benefits agreement codifying amenities for current tenants during construction, including an increase in green space, as well as a rent freeze during construction. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Waldorf. I'm a homeowner in the immediate neighborhood. We have all adapted in this neighborhood to the existing 60-unit, two-bedroom apartments. Now, the infill would be 102 one-bedroom apartments, 416 square feet. That's jammed in. Per Joe's average, in his very detailed report, there could be an average of two people, maybe a single mother and child, in this one-bedroom, 416 square feet. And I coined the phrase at the last meeting, "cookie cutter." This is a very unimaginative, amazingly ugly, new build infill on a really lovely property. Go down there and walk it, look at it. At the last meeting, we went down afterwards, the so-called courtyard is a huge field with two playyards, a barbecue area where people can gather. I very strongly feel that this is too much infill. Yes, we need it, but not this way. Would you want this in your own neighborhood? I object strongly to all the trees being killed for quick access for the construction. I object to the exception being offered. I strongly object to this. 150 square feet is a minimum private outside space. Do we need, I'm a retired psychologist that worked in very different venues. Do you think people, tenants, have the right to some personal, private space outside in nature? This is what our kids need, this is what our seniors and students need. They want to subtract it by two-thirds. 48 square feet will be your private patio or balcony. That is unacceptable. We have standards that need to be respected and acknowledged and put into practice. I object to the environmental Part D, quote, "would not result in any significant effects related to traffic evidenced by the traffic study noise," which would be greater than baseline for all allowable uses, allowable. So, if we use, now, this is like incredibly preservative. If we guesstimate that maybe there might be two in these teeny little boxes living, trying to live out their days, how, even with a two-way traffic, does Alliance accommodate just half of this infill during commuter times of 51 more cars? 51 more cars?
Thank you. That was your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Before my three minutes starts, could we pull up some of the first slides from the staff report showing the plot plan and surrounding streets? Yeah. That's my roof right there. I'd like to note that...
Glenn, I'm sorry for the benefit of the people at the...
Yeah. So, I'm just pointing out the footpath in the lower right-hand corner by the North Arrow. That footpath connects Alliance to Western Avenue, and I'm on the corner, right there on Western Avenue. So, the impacts of this project, obviously, traffic. I spoke before we came to the meeting last time, and almost got hit on the way here trying to get through the Foster and Alliance intersection, just people not looking. Cumulative impacts of this project going forward, you know, we need to look at not just the impacts of this place, but with Cal Poly getting the property adjacent, there are going to be cumulative, cumulative impacts. Descriptors of this project include Motel 6, army barracks, Soviet-era apartment blocks, East Germany, that kind of thing. Let's try to do better. I can't believe that there's not a solar component on this building. I mean, I have a project that went through the city. I'm required to put solar on my project, Title 24 requires it. I am unclear how this gets a waiver, but that's ridiculous. Improvements, so, the Craftsman Mall project, that developer, I think, had on the table bus passes for his residents, things like that. I'm not hearing anything like that from, on this project. One thing I'd like to see is bus passes. Another thing I'd like to see is an improvement on this, on the pass-through trail going up to Western Avenue. The city owns that, the city is trying to maintain it, it's falling apart, the railings are falling over. I pick up litter there weekly, I pick up hypodermic syringes there weekly. We actually need gates on the top and bottom of that that are operated by the city, just like they operate the gates at the skate park. We need that. That area is a place where criminals go and sort through the backpacks that they steal out of cars. I pick up personal items, just all sorts of crap down there. And that's right across the street from my house. We have beer picnics at 2:00 in the morning on the little rocks at the top on Western Avenue. We are impacted. This is going to bring a lot more foot traffic right into my neighborhood, and that's fine. That's great. Needs to be addressed. That's an impact. All those kids, they're going to be students, let's call it what it is, this is student housing. We need it. All of those kids that live there are going to, they're not driving their car, they're going to be walking right up that footpath, which is fine, but let's take care of the footpath. Let's address the issues there. I think gates that are opened in the morning and closed at night are required. I'd like to see, if this project goes forward, I'd like to see that as a condition of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is William Stardry. I'm a homeowner in the general vicinity, close vicinity, actually. And before that, I was a renter in Arcata. And before that, I spent maybe five years as a renter in Eureka trying to find a place in Arcata that, you know, met my needs. And I understand it's incredibly difficult, we need housing. And as far as I can tell, I mean, this meets zoning, it meets the requirements, and it meets the general plan. So, having just built a house in Arcata, I can tell you, it's incredibly difficult, and I think there's a reason why only a few people own big multifamily housing units. I've worked on almost all of them as a, doing the fire alarms for them. And it's because they're incredibly difficult to build, only certain people can do it, only certain people can afford to do it, and all the really nice things like proposing the Craftsman Mall are subsidized by the state government, I believe. And the same thing with the parcel next door. So, the idea of forcing someone to build something even taller than two stories makes it so incredibly more expensive. Like, the house I just built is two stories, and it was so difficult, I can't imagine trying to do anything this size. So, I just say, like, as far as a builder and a homeowner, it just doesn't seem like reasonable to force people into doing all these things that don't work out in the financial aspects of it. Anyways, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to provide comment on this project? David, do we have people waiting on Zoom?
We do. Can you unmute Anthony?
Sorry about that, thank you. Hi, my name is Anthony DeLuca. I've been here for 20 years and call this place home. I've also moved here from Southern California, where there's a lot of population density. And I think some of my comments have been a bit nuanced and maybe not well-understood, so I thought about coming at it a different way today. Arcata has 36% homeownership, where the country's median, or, you know, range is 64.4% and the state 55%, and the county 56%. The median wealth of homeowners in our country is normally $254,900. About 40 times the median household wealth of renters, $6,270. And the point I'm making here is that Arcata has an economic issue with lack of home ownership that's creating a wealth gap, which is hurting our local business culture. And so, a lot of the population density talk that's happening lately, it seems like we're going to exasperate the problem and further hurt Arcata's economy and culture. So, what I think personally would be a good use of all of these grant opportunities that the state is coming up with, is if the city made a plan that empowered and encouraged the homeowners here to maybe build on their lot, or build into some of the other houses that they might own, because sometimes people own multiple houses. And I agree with one of the commenters who spoke there in the audience, who pointed out that the three big landlord companies in town basically are the reason we have a rental problem, because they can all create the prices together, and there's no competition. So, a large part of why Arcata's rental rates are so high is because all of the rentals are owned by the same people. So, what I see is that we are racing towards a world of hurt problem, and that the city has a duty to hear all of these comments and respect that we're asking for a better plan. I think Cal Poly didn't expect all of the residents of Arcata to care about Arcata the way that we do. And that's why we're here having this conversation. I would appreciate it personally if we could address some of the problems, like the needle litter and the homelessness and the actual wealth gap, instead of falsely promising that building thousands of more units and letting the same people own them is going to solve the problem they're creating in the first place. Thank you.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Hello, my name is Daniel Baggett. I'm a former tenant of Strombeck Property, a few, actually, Strombeck Properties units during my time at HSU. I'm a Humboldt native, born and raised in Arcata, currently living Bay Area. And the rental problems that several people have brought up are, they're a problem that's statewide at least, and inflation as a whole is affecting every single facet of all of our lives, from the richest to the poorest. Maybe not, maybe the richest actually are getting richer, but those are only the one percenters, as people say. A landlord like Steve Strombeck is serving a great community need, and these additional units will, in fact, serve a great community need. And that's probably going to result in lots of student housing, yes, but I think it's not going to be the same traffic problem that many people do think because of all the, of the students that will be moving up without cars. And people that are just going to college for the first time don't need, not only do they not need as much space as older, non-student residents, but they, in fact, don't want, like, if they're going to trade $200 in rent price for 100 square foot of outdoor space, they would gladly take the cheaper rent. And I think that it really is going to help the community because of the foot traffic and people that are able to live close to campus. And I think it's going to result in more dollars that come into the community. And when people have to live in Blue Lake or live in Eureka and move to Humboldt State, which, or Cal Poly Humboldt, it was Humboldt State when I went there, and a lot of my classmates were forced to do that because there was not enough, and still is not enough, housing in Arcata. And I think this solves a primary need in a cost-feasible way. It is dense housing, but that's more and more the state of the world as well. And all the greenery that Arcata has to offer, all the beauty, that's why Humboldt is the gem that it is. And I think that it will stay that way with flourishing Cal Poly Humboldt. And more people will enjoy their time there and be able to really appreciate Arcata for what it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. We have no one else in line waiting to speak on this item.
In that case, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Deliberations. Yeah, the applicant would like to speak to any of the issues that were raised?
Point out for the record that the project is equipped with solar arrays on each of the new buildings, and those documents were submitted to city staff. Thank you.
Sorry, I'd like to just speak to the solar real quick. There'll be 450 solar panels as part of this infill project. It would be 175, 175, 100,000 watts of solar, which reduces 191 tons of carbon emission It'd be 175, 175, 100,000 watts of solar, which reduces 191 tons of carbon emission each year, which is equivalent to 41 passenger cars taken off the road, or 95 hours of a jet flying. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? Ideas, deliberations with this project?
I'd like to get John's feelings about the reduction in personal space, outdoor personal space.
Well, personally, I think that the requirement for personal outdoor space is overrated and unnecessary. If you look around town, you can see some apartment buildings that really require some tortured design in order to get that space. And the private home space, the balconies and decks that are on the north side of the building are pretty much useless. They're not inviting. And you'll notice that typically they're filled up with bicycles and excess furniture and stuff. So I don't have a problem with the reduction, the proposed reduction in the private outdoor space. I was going to mention that on the facade drawings, it's not shown that the outdoor space, the decks and the downstairs patios are separated in some way, have a divider. So, you know, I can't, I don't think you can really call it private outdoor space if your neighbor next door can spread out into your side and actually sit there and look in your window. Doesn't seem very private. So I was gonna ask the applicant about that. Otherwise, it's true, as some commenters have pointed out, that the design is pretty pedestrian. You know, it's not imaginative. It is, however, a design that is economical to build. And, you know, the nicer we make it, the higher the rent's going to be. That's just the way it works. The other Strombeck Properties, Strombeck organization has shown that they do a really good job of building these buildings in this style. You know, they've also shown, at least in my opinion, that they maintain their properties well, and that they actually seem to care about the tenants. So this is not, you know, and as far as design goes, the original buildings are not that great, and the proposed buildings are not that great. We will gain some residential units. Maybe there'll be a lot of students. I don't think students are a different class of people. I don't think students should be discriminated against. I mean, you know, we've all been there ourselves, and so we know that not all students are hell raisers. And in this case, the rentals will be available to anyone who wants to rent one of those places. So it won't be all students. In terms of design, Fred brought up a couple things. The entry doors that cause you to walk in and walk by the kitchen sink, it is kind of awkward, and it might be possible to swap the windows with the doors, so that the door won't, you know, interfere with the sink. Also, the question about gas wall furnaces. At some point, isn't there a state law coming along that's going to eliminate the use of gas?
To speak to that briefly, the city council has a priority project or goal to implement a new, new gas for electrification ordinance that would prohibit gas, natural gas, in new construction, except for certain exemptions. And that is moving forward through technical research and with the Energy Committee. And we, as the Environmental Services Department, anticipate bringing that to the city council for their consideration in the new year. But it's not implemented yet.
Thank you. So anyhow, gas wall furnaces work great, and, but at some point, we probably won't be seeing them anymore. I also didn't see on the plan where the water heaters are located. And presumably, there'll be gas also. Anyhow, you know, yes, I would really like to see an improved, better-looking design. But as I said, anything that we do to improve the design will increase the cost. So I'm inclined to, you know, approve the project if the applicant wanted to come forward and say they would redesign the buildings in a way that would look better, possibly going to two stories, and maybe, well, anyway, that's, you know, that's a maybe, but that'd be up to the applicant. Anyway, that's my say.
I guess first I want to say that I've heard some really good things about Strombeck, and they seem to have a good reputation. I'm happy to hear about the solar panels. I personally think a reduction of 2/3 of private space is huge. I live in a townhouse, and I had the fortunate to have a more space, a small patio. And even though I'm a single mom with one child, I don't know what would happen if we were taking that space away. It is like rats in a maze. And when we start packing people in, we're gonna have some psychological implications. I also am concerned about the trees. Sounds like I should have taken a trip down there, and I apologize for that, ran out of time. I wish that I would have taken that opportunity, because it sounds like some of these trees are quite big, 24 to 26 inch, and some that are quite big. So I know where I live, if it's green, cut it down. And I had to fight for that, because we were, you know, already on the freeway, and what little bit of greenery we did have was like gold. And we won, we prevailed. And I just would like to see if there's some way that we could maybe go up to preserve some of that green space. I know that it can cost more money, but I think that also affordable doesn't have to be ugly. I think that we can be creative and still keep the price down in affordability. I absolutely know that we need more housing, and I think we can do this and still keep the quality of life and address some of the concerns of the current residents. I'd like to see maybe some two bedrooms in there, instead of all just single dwelling units. And I used to be a student, so I absolutely get that. But I'd like to preserve, or like to see some preservation of the current residents there and that culture that is there. We have families, we have senior citizens, we have students, we have a little of everyone. I'd like to see more ADA spaces. I think that that's important as well, if there's some way that we could put some more in there. Bus passes, great idea. If we're gonna reduce parking and we want people to drive less, somehow to make that an amenity, I wish that a developer didn't have to pay for that. I wish that we actually took advantage of some of the opportunities where we could do some matches through the county, where there's grants out there, so that we could have free buses for everyone. But that's not where we're at right now. But maybe there would be some way that we could work that in there and still keep the rent down. Anyway, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
All right, I'll go. It's, I think, John, I really appreciated your comments, both about outdoor space, and that I think we can all agree that this is kind of standard-built. But it is fitting code, it's fitting land use standards, and it's hard to judge it. It's like, well, if he's followed all of the math and requirements about space and setbacks and everything else, then how, on what hook do we deny a project? One ask is, well, there's two. One was setbacks about trash enclosures, that seems very low-lying. The personal space thing is a tough one. However, I totally agree about when I see these little patios with stuff that looks like it just sits there. It doesn't look like a place people hang out. I wish that personal space could get, either do the personal space to some certain degree, or there's an equation, a mitigation to turn it into better public space, you know, or more public space that they can all share, which might cut into how many buildings you can squeeze into a place. That's not code now. So, you know, it's old development with new standards, it's a tough fit. I also feel for mature trees, I'm less concerned about the hedge line of trees that look like they're right on that western border than I am the interior trees that look like they could actually survive this. If it was just meant the construction had to work around a few of the better specimens, it's a shame to see a mature tree right in the middle of a development go away. And I'm sure that the neighbors that are in proximity to those trees enjoy them a lot. So, you know, that said, I don't see a denial pathway unless we want to really quibble over this personal space thing, personal outdoor space. It, beyond that, you know, the project fits the land use standards, and who are we to deny something when they've done their calculations correctly? You know, if they squeezed them in, I'm surprised. I'm surprised that many units can fit onto that property, but then again, they did their homework, and, you know, I'm not gonna judge it.
I am gonna judge it. That's what we're here to do. And I guess I'd like to respond first to Dan's comments with regard to a pathway, and I'm gonna refer to the design review, which I rarely do, because within private properties, I often figure, you know, the tenants know what they're getting into, and they are forewarned. And so we give some deference to the builder, the landlord, the provider of housing. But in this case, we're being asked to make some judgments. And looking at the draft findings in this packet, I find that with regard to general plan policies, I cannot make findings F or G on page 28. I cannot make finding H on page 29. And with regard to the tree removal permit, I cannot make finding A on page 30, the most crucial finding. These refer to more than just aesthetics. The idea that these proposed new buildings are compatible with the surrounding buildings, and incidentally, our code doesn't specify surrounding buildings off-site. And I think we assume that it means neighboring parcels, but I'm not sure that the code is actually that specific. Compatible buildings does not mean buildings the same as. And just because we have a site with three two-story buildings does not mean that completely filling in the open space that makes that development garden apartments, it doesn't mean that those additional two-story buildings with additional parking and an additional road that would destroy all the trees is actually compatible with the surrounding or existing development. Even though it meets the numbers in the code, I don't believe we can make the findings of compatibility. I think many of the current residents, and even some of the current neighbors, would probably agree that completely filling in that site with new buildings and new parking, even if it's within the numbers that the code allows, does not make it compatible with the existing surrounding development. I think that some of the public's comments, that covering up less of the site by perhaps building either some taller buildings, or moving buildings, new buildings, to the parts of the site that are already parking, might preserve some of the values of that site that would make new development compatible. And who knows, that might even get the number of additional people living there that the code allows for. I asked about the stormwater program, I believe the engineering, if they say the stormwater isn't gonna make James Creek flood, and our city engineer agrees, and it's meeting the MP4 program, there's not much we can say about that. But the idea that one riparian owner of a riparian site would come up with a management plan that's not being done in conjunction with the other owners, that seems really kind of crazy. And to add a condition of approval that would politely request that the owners come up with such a plan all by themselves in the future, but if they can coordinate with their riparian neighbors, that would be nice, that's not strong enough. And so if any part of that MP4 stormwater plan is linked to the need for a streamside management plan for James Creek, on just the portion of the land that these owners own, I'm not sure that's asking enough. And it may be something that the owners can come back with in six months or a year after talking to their neighbors, that would satisfy me and would allow me to make those findings. But right now, because I can't make all of the required findings, I wouldn't vote for the project as it has been proposed right now. I can envision a better project with more small apartments, maybe not that many, in different parts of the site, especially the areas that are now currently parking, that would leave some open space in ways that would continue to allow us to call those garden apartments, and would continue to allow the current residents to live in the places that they thought they were moving into. Thank you.
Yeah, listening to the comments.
Yeah, listening to the comments of the residents adjacent and all the residents present within the Westman Gardens location, I feel, you know, I feel that this is a project that it has good intention, you know, this is something that we need. We need community infill. We need places for people to live. However, I feel this is just, you know, poorly, poorly, just thought out. Every single time I drive Foster and I drive by those apartments, it's kind of intense looking. And it's, you know, we're essentially perpetuating that. And, you know, I get, you know, the intention and the need for it, but, you know, it kind of removes the, you know, the feel, the style of this community, you know. It's just, we're expecting to have a bunch of cookie cutter, you know, residential, you know, locations, apartments to live, you know, and this kind of definitely carries in onto our gateway area plan as well. You know, we need to, you know, we need to have, you know, appropriate, you know, aesthetics, not only for the, you know, the proposed structures that are going to be, you know, constructed to be compatible with its setting, but also it's, you know, what's existing, but also the, you know, the neighborhood as well, just like Judith was saying right here, right now. And it's going to be starkly different, you know, the what's existing out there now to what is proposed. And having that compatibility is, it's going to be total, you know, it's going to be night and day looking at the two different buildings. So, I feel personally as well, it's just, you know, this is good intention, there's a lot of work that's been put into this, but, you know, I feel that we kind of need to go back to the drawing boards on this one. But that's my personal opinion on this. I think we can, you know, I think we can do better. You know, I think we do better for the community of Arcata and for the people of Arcata because this is who we're serving here and this is who, you know, who the developer is serving as well.
Kim, any last words after hearing all that? Do you have a position one way or the other?
As they said.
Does anyone want to propose a motion, make a motion?
Can I make another comment?
Yes, of course.
Before we propose our motion, I'd actually like each of us to go through the findings that we're being asked to make in support of the plan development permit as well as the tree removal permit. And I'd like you to make sure before you vote that you know whether you can make each and every one of those findings. If you can't make any part of one of those findings, how are you going to vote for the project? In some cases, we're asked to vote on the preponderance of, yeah, it's a good project, but there are these problems with it. That's why we have findings. If we can't affirmatively make the findings that are going on record for this project, every single one of them, how can we vote yes for the project? And so, before we do vote, I'd like you to look closely at the findings that you're being asked to affirm.
Very well stated. Thank you, Judith.
You might have just addressed a couple of the comments that did come up.
Yeah, please.
I want to make sure that, you know, to the extent that you're reviewing those findings, and again, we're, you know, we're assuming that you did, you received the packets on Friday and that you've reviewed them and that you're coming to this meeting with those. It is very important, critical that you are able to make those findings. And it's absolutely true that if you can't make the findings, then you should not approve the project. You can deny it. You know, I think in a situation like this, creating findings for denial, if that's the direction that you're considering going, would be prudent. And we can dig into it in more detail if that's, you know, something you'd like to discuss. The converse is true as well, that if you can make the findings, that you must approve the project. And so, you know, to the points that Commissioner Tagney was making, you may want to, you know, dig into this in more detail, as Commissioner Mayor stated, to, you know, kind of flesh those concepts out. But there are several things that really are just not a part of your deliberations. I think it's fine that you've daylighted these ideas, that you've, you know, created, you know, connection with the community and identified that you've heard their concerns. But there are several things, you know, and not to diminish the community's concerns at all, but there are several things that were said tonight that were put into the public record. And I just want you to be clear that you're distinguishing between things that are subject to your findings of fact and things that are not subject to your findings of fact. And so, you know, to the extent that, you know, folks feel like the space creates community, I do not disagree with that. I have no basis to disagree with that. I fully support those, that wisdom that came from the community tonight about this project. But it is also not something that should influence your decision tonight as basis for finding a fact. You're looking at the findings that are stated in here, the, you know, way that it comports with the general plan, the codes that we have on the books, and despite the fact that it may create a vibrant community space for the residents, if that's not a finding that you are subject to making, then you shouldn't have that be part of your deliberations, you know, despite the comments. And so, I just wanted to identify, you know, there were several things that were mentioned by planning commissioners, you know, the all-electric initiative, you know, it would be nice. There are several reasons why we believe at the staff level that the project should be all-electric. It's part of the reason why we're going through the all-electric ordinance. I think through discussions with the applicant, we may be able to convince them that it's the wisest thing to do. We've actually demonstrated that it's cheaper to build projects that way. But that's not one of your deliberation points. You know, bus passes, you know, we're looking to include these as amenities, additional expanded ADA, these kinds of things that were brought up that, you know, we would like to see in these projects moving forward, that we're considering creating as community benefits through the, you know, through the gateway project. But they just simply aren't on the table for conditions of approval, you know, currently. We've had a couple of projects come through. The Sorrel Place had an approximate $2.5 million subsidy that the city secured from the state to help support some of these alternative transportation programs that were included. We have not done that legwork. We do not have a subsidy to bring to this project to make, you know, bus passes a priority. Again, we think there are some really good reasons why the applicant may want to do that themselves, but we can't create a condition of approval or deny the project because it's not a part of the project. And then lastly, around design, I mean, I think that, you know, I don't have anything additional to add to the comments that were made around design. I think everyone's recognizing that, you know, that this is not the highest quality of design. But we are somewhat limited at this point based on some of the state actions that have been taken specifically surrounding the Housing Accountability Act and how far into design we can go without specifics, objective standards. And so, you know, we, as you start to get into design, I think we can, you know, request the applicant voluntarily take some amendments to the project that are, you know, relatively minor to help break up the massing and those sorts of things. You know, we certainly at the staff level would, you know, support the applicant's decision to go with a three or four-story building and create additional open space on the site. I think that's in line with the vision for the community, but again, it's just not something that we can condition. So, you know, it was kind of a, you know, high-level skimming over the tops of some of these issues. But before you enter into your final deliberations and preparing to take action, you know, I wanted to make sure that you were taking action with the appropriate, you know, findings in mind.
Thank you, David. F and G were the two conditions, our findings, that you said you were really challenged with. And as I glanced them over again.
F, G, and H. And the tree removal permit, A.
I think that we need to then focus in on those. I mean, I agree, those seem to be where the rub is on this discussion. So, why don't we dice that up a little bit?
So, it's on packet page 28, just for the public and the commissioners' reference.
So, F, the proposed project is designed to ensure compatibility with adjacent uses within the zoning district and general neighborhood of the proposed development. Why should we find that reasonable or why shouldn't we?
I think it is definitely okay. It's compatible with adjacent uses and if you look around that area, there are a number of similar apartment buildings.
Does similar mean compatible with when you're filling up the space that makes those apartment buildings so livable?
Well, the question is, what does compatible mean in this case?
I believe that filling up all of the remaining open space in that area does not represent compatibility. Some people might say that it does. And of course, since we don't know what the adjacent property to the west will be, we can make no judgments about compatibility overall. We have to assume that that is what it is now. We know that it actually won't be. And so, although it's difficult to say this building isn't compatible with that specific building, we don't know what the overall compatibility with surrounding uses is likely to be. I'm recommending to myself that I can't make that finding.
I'm going to agree with John on this one, that I think it is compatible in that regard. And I feel aligned with Dan in the sense that I don't love everything about the project, but I'm having a hard time finding something to hang a denial on, I think is how you put Other commissioners have thought on the compatibility.
It feels like the compatibility issue has to be tied to land use standards, you know. If we don't think that buildings should be that close, then we better go back to the land use, you know. We've got some code to rewrite. I don't know how else to have this conversation. I mean, I get that the existing dwellings are very different than the new dwellings and that's a challenge. And it's, what, 1976 or something? Or was it 67?
67.
You know, it's a different era of development. And compatibility is a tough one, you know. There's a lot of neighborhood issues that we struggle with. At least here, they're all rental apartments. They're all, you know, roughly in the same, you know, as John put, and, you know, the neighborhood is a rental neighborhood. If we're trying to also look forward on what's going on with the Cal Poly property, we can't entertain that remotely. That has zero to do with anything here. You know, I think it's a good topic, Judith. I applaud you for bringing it up. And I think G is harder to find. And if you want to move on, I don't know. Kimberly, do you want to weigh in on this, on F? Or Christian?
In respects to F, it's, you know, I respect definitely, you know, your guys' analysis in regards of how we have to look at it from the land use aspect. And I don't feel personally that that's something that I can argue against, particularly regarding, you know, its compatibility with the land use code. Maybe it's the other findings.
Shall we move on to G?
Can I just read a section of that finding? The last section of that proposed finding is the two-story units have bulk and mass similar and compatible with the existing apartments on and off-site. They are similar to the apartments on-site. But they will fundamentally so change the character of that site that I would argue that they are not compatible at that bulk, that massing, and that complete eradication of usable expanses of open space. So, similar is not the same as compatible.
I guess that was exactly what came to my mind was the word "character." And I guess I'm going to have to go with Judith on F. So, maybe we could move on to the others or has everybody weighed in?
I also am mindful of the city staff's message that this project could have been higher density and that this is not the maximum allowable density for this site. I'm able to find that compatibility with F, but I'm happy to move on to G as well.
For those of you who don't have the packet in front of you, I'd like to read the statement of the finding we're expected to make.
It's also in the monitor. And if our IT can put it on the feed, that would be great. Thanks.
Great. How wonderful this technology is. The proposed project will produce a comprehensive development of superior quality. I'm not sure I need to read any further.
Proposed project will produce a comprehensive development of superior quality. So, what the heck is superior quality? You know, if there's superior quality, there's inferior quality somewhere. You know, I think this whole paragraph here is unclear and, you know, it makes it difficult to make a real decision. It goes on, superior quality, for example, appropriate variety of structure placement and orientation opportunities, appropriate mix of structure sizes, high-quality architectural design, increased amounts of landscaping and open space, improved solutions to the design and placement of parking facilities, et cetera. High-quality architectural design. Now, there's a can of worms, high-quality architectural design. This, you know, I've already said that this doesn't strike me as being real high-quality architectural design, but it's also adequate and suitable for the use. We don't always get high-quality architectural design. You know, it's hard to even define exactly what that is. This whole finding question here is so full of comparatives with nothing to compare it to that it's almost meaningless and difficult to make a conclusion based on this.
If it's so difficult to make that an affirmative statement, given all the examples that are listed below, appropriate variety of structure placement and orientation, appropriate mix of structure sizes... mix of structure sizes, increased amounts of landscaping, I'm assuming that's above the bare minimum required by the code, not increased according to the existing conditions of the site? If it's so difficult to make an affirmative statement like that, it seems that we can't make that affirmative statement.
The challenge, of course, is that it's just so subjective, you know? Where do you draw the line? We've got lots of recent apartment complexes, or at least a few recent projects that are kind of similar, you know? Two stories, lots of single occupancy rentals, things like that, pretty similar, kind of minimal landscape. I think what's challenging and different about this one is the existing large mature trees and the existing buildings. And I'm not crazy about the existing buildings, and as one of the tenants said, that most of the light only comes in from one side. Wow, bad design. So I'm, you know, not sure we want to try to mimic what's already there. And their low-slope roof, as I recall, there's, you know, I don't know. The subjective stuff is very challenging.
So ultimately, yeah, it's, it's the wording. Ultimately, it has to do with, you know, something that might not otherwise occur from more traditional development, right? And this seems like a traditional development that we've imposed in the City of Arcata. You know, this is what we're doing. This is what we've done. We've approved other projects that look exactly the same. You know, it doesn't, you know, might not otherwise occur. You know what I mean? And this is, this is just like the traditional development. Nothing special, nothing superior. You know, it's kind of in opposition of a lot of the stuff that's outlined as, for example.
Kim, do you have clear thoughts on G?
Um, I feel like increased amounts of landscaping and open space is measurable and that it's not so subjective.
Well, that's a good point. We know that open space is going to be vastly less in the new scenario, and I am challenged by the lack of open space. If there was a way to mitigate that, you know, back to that each person's personal space being reduced, well, let's get some more open space. I don't know how to find that in this development unless just one building went away and there was a enhanced park or something. Um, you know, it's not up to me, but I don't know.
If I could just throw something into your conversation, this finding G and F as well, these are findings under the plan development permit findings. And the plan development permit, the purpose of it, is intended to give flexibility in the design or, you know, setbacks or, you know, other, other elements of the project that don't conform to the specific, you know, standards that are in, in the normal code if you can find that, you know, there's, there's something, something more beneficial that's coming out of that. And it can be a range of different things. This is, you know, provides EG, for example, you know, appropriate variety of structure placement orientation opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. All these things are on this list. That's a, including, not limited to, and not, you know, exclusive list. So it's, you know, if you're trying to make the finding here that I have to make every single one of these statements true in this project in order to approve it, that's not what you're being asked to do here. What you're being asked to do is, can you make the finding that there's something about the project that provides superior quality to a project that would be subject to the normal standards that are in the code? And that's why you're doing a plan development permit. Again, this is a little bit of a tricky finding. The plan development permit in general is kind of an odd beast. If we were doing a plan development permit type A, you would be asked to make this exact same finding, that it provides for superior quality, but a type A plan development permit complies with all the standards. And so how do you, how do you, how do you ever approve a type A plan development permit? Um, you know, I think it's a, you know, internal question you're going to have to struggle with. I don't think you have to make every single finding. You don't have to find that in every way it's superior. You have to find the way that you believe it is superior. Staff has provided a draft of the finding here. This may or may not be the finding, and ultimately, you may not be able to make that finding. And again, that gets back to Commissioner Mayor's point, that if you can't make these findings, then you really can't approve the permit. You have to, have to be able to make the findings. But you don't have to find everything on this list.
Thanks, David. Um, you wanted to review H as well? Judith, is that one of the ones that you?
It might be useful if we can address the exception. I, I don't think that eliminating those private spaces would, would kill or, or, or make an approval for me on this particular one, but I definitely don't see how either of those exceptions would result in a more desirable development. So I can't make that finding. I wonder if any of you can.
Does anybody else have a clear bead on those two exceptions to the land use code in H? I think, Dan, you mentioned you saw those as not usually problematic or not, not major issues for you in your considerations.
Your mic is...
Sorry, thank you. You're talking about the private space and the setback of the trash enclosures.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not overly concerned about those.
Not concerned? Christian?
Um, yeah, this is, you know, this is just a practice of, you know, what will work, won't work, and it's really super subjective. And, um, I don't know. I'd say, you know, in respects to what we're asking, what we're being asked in respects to this exception, you know, I value the outdoors. I value having outside space specifically, and I don't think it's all just for storage of bicycles and other materials that can fit inside your home because you don't have enough storage, you don't have the space inside. Um, you know, I think it's, it's important for our mental health and our well-being to be able to step outside and enjoy the fresh air. And also, in your own private space, not just in a social setting. Because, you know, as much as we are social beings, we need our own personal space, and limiting it, you know, may affect that. You know, the waste and recycling building things, I think is not really an issue to me, but I think the, the private recreational space, I think that's a, you know, that's a big ask in respects to, we're already trying to, you know, stuff as much as we possibly can into the limited space that's out there.
Kim?
I think it's just getting really late for me, but I'm hoping somebody can offer me some clarity on the existing waste recycling building. So I just think of a great number of people and how much trash one can get and recycling. And then I think about vermin, and I think about setbacks, and that seems like a big deal to me. And then also, I feel that, are we supposed to make a decision, H, like, by itself, right? So each one of these, we should be able to find findings of approval? And if we can't find any findings of approval at all in H, what does that mean? Then we still go, or?
No, if we, if we can't make the findings, each, these individual findings, then per David's direction, we can't approve.
Because each one are separate on their own. So you might be able to find some findings within, say, G or F, but we only have two in H. And if both, they can't, then there's my answer.
Yeah, that's correct. So, you know, each of these findings have, you know, slight differences. So the, the previous finding, you know, that list is not all-inclusive. You don't have to make findings on each one of these items. You have to make a finding that you find, or that you've been able to find that something about the project provides a comprehensive development of superior quality. For H, you're actually being asked to make the findings that the two exceptions that are being requested for the plan development type B, that you can basically find that those make a more desirable development. The outdoor private open space is basically, the standard is 10 by 15. Uh, that's about the size of, you know, master bedroom, 150 square feet. And to my knowledge, we have not permitted a multifamily project, at least during my tenure, that, that actually complied with that standard. They've all asked for a minor use permit to reduce that down to a more standard-sized balcony, because it really is. It's, it's the size of an additional bedroom, and, you know, I think if, you know, most, most of the times, the planning commission has found that that's, that is excessive. So, you know, it is a standard. You can say that, no, we don't find this for this particular project. Um, and in terms of the solid waste and recycling, the one thing I do want to check in on is to make sure that Environmental Services has reviewed this for, you know, for the standards coming up for green waste recycling, food waste recycling, and that it, you know, wouldn't allow for, you know, that compatibility with those regulations. But apart from that, you know, it's, it's really just a site design standard and setbacks associated with that.
Could I ask a question? So we're talking like standard piece of plywood, right? Six foot? That's what the patio is going to look like? Trying to get some...
Four by eight is thirty.
So what I've heard from people, or somebody said, you know, they're not using it anyway. You see a bike or, you know, a chair. Well, what else could you put on those tiny spaces? So that might be why they're not being used. If somebody had an amount of space, like a 10 by 15, you could actually put a little table, outdoor dining, a couple chairs, a play area for children, you could study out there. But I don't see how you can do anything other than a bike and a stool on that little tiny space that you're talking about.
Well, staff is saying that no projects have been built with a conforming outdoor space, that they're all reduced to a more reasonable quote-unquote size.
So we're saying that we've made exemptions on every single project that's come by here to accommodate that?
That's what David said, yes.
Okay.
That's a standard request that we met with these other projects.
Can I ask a question here? And that is, why do you all think the city council put a plan development overlay on this site, other than the fact that the site as a whole was larger than five acres? Because that's the reason that this project couldn't go through with a minor use permit instead of the plan development.
Uh, yeah, the, I don't know if that was directed at staff, but the, the city council applied the plan development overlay on all residential properties over an acre. And so it's just, you know, there's not, there's no, you know, specific, there's nothing specific to this parcel, I guess, that, that required that. It's just a catch-all.
Okay, so the city council apparently didn't want projects like these to be able to go through a simple use permit or, or minor development type of variance-like procedure. They wanted us to think of the project as a whole in reviewing changes to it.
Also, just to give a point of reference to the 150-square-foot standard, so the units themselves are 415 square feet, so the patio would be 36% the size of the, the units themselves, if it met the standard.
If nobody has anything to add to the discussion about finding H, then should we discuss the tree removal portion of this? Does anyone want to start with that?
I'm happy to start with that. The reason that most of the large trees would need to remove, be removed from the far west side of the site is in order to build that circular road around the site itself. And the reason that the design requires that circular road is because there is parking right smack in the middle of the site. There, there, there needs to be road access to the middle of the site, essentially so that people can park their cars there. If you get rid of that parking in the middle of the site, even if you keep the same number of units, possibly in a different configuration, those trees along the western fence would need to be removed, because you wouldn't need to have a 24-foot-wide road going all around the site. Some of the other trees would need to be removed in order to put buildings in particular locations. Some of those locations would be less than 20 feet from the adjacent existing buildings or from other new buildings. But similarly, it's those roadways and parking that kind of push all of those buildings into the configuration that would require the removal of so many mature trees. There are other ways of putting additional housing on the site, especially if it were to go in what's currently parking on that site, that wouldn't require the removal of so many trees, and possibly none of the biggest of the trees. And so when I look at the finding that we're being requested to make, the approval of the tree removal permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and it's consistent with the provisions of the chapter and in compliance with the general plan. It may be in compliance, but I, I really have trouble saying that it's not detrimental to public health and welfare, although of course, providing additional housing helps public welfare. I think you can still provide additional housing on the site to support public welfare without removing all that existing open space and all those trees. And so I can't make that finding A.
And are you thinking that through reconfiguration or, or less buildings, or any of the above, and you don't care it's not up?
Either both, any of the above, and, and I guess I'll take this opportunity, since I might not get it again, to say, yeah, we need more housing. Yeah, you can put more housing on that site. I would love the owners to take another few months, reconfigure the project, and bring it back to us, rather than asking us to vote on this design right now.
I have a question about planned unit developments. My understanding is on a planned unit development, you can have standards that don't meet the current land use code. So, for example, I'm thinking that in this case, if the applicant came back and eliminated that parking in the middle of the complex, they could just ask for a reduced amount of parking via the planned development. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is something that could be modified. Again, I'd, you know, suggest that if you want to start talking about, you know, potential solutions, you know, we've heard sort of a round on the findings that were raised, ideas on, you know, different points of view around those findings. And there may be some, you know, conditions that you could think of that could help, you know, address some of the, you know, the differences of opinions that you have around those. But I would, you know, encourage you to involve the project proponent in those discussions to see whether or not the solutions that you're coming up with would work for them. So it is, you know, to answer your question, yes, you can reduce parking if you made the finding with the planned development that it resulted in a better project. Another, you know, question that came up that, you know, the project proponent may want to weigh in on is whether the development could be done while retaining some of the mature trees, you know, on the site. That might be something that goes to address some concerns that were raised.
Well, let's hear if there's any other ideas or questions from commissioners about the tree removal findings, and then maybe we can get some feedback from the project owners. Sure, of course.
So John used the word planned unit development. I apparently am confused, because I live at a planned unit development. And my thought was that you owned it. That's not the case, they can be rentals?
We refer to the permit type as a planned development. Planned unit development in real estate does have a specific meaning around using planned unit developments to create condos, which I believe is...
Unit development and condominiums, they're two separate things, but...
You know, I think that some jurisdictions would call our planned development a planned unit development.
So David, are you roughly suggesting some kind of back and forth with the applicant at this point? I mean...
Or between the commissioners. I mean, you have points, counterpoints, you can either, you know, there's a couple of different options at this point. You know, there are certainly some concerns around, you know, that I'm elevated, I haven't, you know, we haven't gone into them in depth, and I'm not prepared to at this point, around, you know, our latitude with respect to some of the housing laws that have been adopted in the last couple of years. We're still conducting research on that. But given the nature of the discussion, you know, the pathways are either, you know, put it to a vote, someone makes a motion, it gets seconded in or not, and then it gets voted on or not. The risk at that juncture to the applicant, per se, is that, you know, if it's voted down, in light of, you know, some minor amendments that could have been made to the project to bring it into, you know, approval, you know, that denial stands, and there's a time period to wait for that. You know, an alternative would be to discuss amongst yourselves the, you know, the potential changes that you'd see to the project to get those who can't make the findings into the column of those who can make the findings. And when you're having those deliberations, I think when you come to, you know, key points that would, you know, require an amendment to the project, that you then involve the developer.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this project to possibly a date certain in order to give the developer an opportunity to modify the proposal and the site plan in ways that we've already identified today, and bring a revised plan back to us for a future vote.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Do you want a date certain to forward it to?
I could give a date certain of six months from now, but the developer, of course, can bring it back sooner if they'd like to.
Do you have any time recommendations?
Again, I'd like to involve the applicant in this discussion. I'm not sure that they have, you know, clear direction as to, you know, what those modifications might be. I think there's a diversity of opinion. So in conjunction with that continuation notice, you might want to, you know, find out, is there a date certain they could come to with changes that you can give them clear direction on?
For letting me come back up. First of all, I want to address a couple of things, if I could. As far as the tree removal, the fire department, we met with Ed Laidlaw, and he said that we needed either a hammerhead or we needed to go all the way around. That's why he liked the circular fashion of that, and that's why the trees were having to come out for that. As far as the parking goes, as far as getting rid of that parking in the middle, we're really big on one-on-one parking, because we've had less parking and we have huge issues with tenants calling us all the time. They don't have anywhere to park. I mean, it's a nightmare, to be honest with you. So we cannot go less than one-to-one, I'll lose, and my secretaries, and it's just a nightmare. If you would pull up, if you'd pull up the one slide, Joe, maybe on the first or second slide there, there's a five-unit, I mean, if you guys are talking about maybe more open space, I'd be willing to get rid of the five-unit building, it's the smallest building, and I'd be willing to take that out right now. I believe it's this, that one, right? Yeah, I think it's right, one, a little bit down, Joe, right there. Oh, it's the one he had, okay. Thank you. So that's the one I'm willing to take out at this point in time, because that's what I'm hearing, you guys want, you know, more open space. I think, I think the fire department's kind of, kind of wants this, this whole circular thing, from a fire standpoint, because there are, there are a number of buildings in the middle, they won't be able to get in there with their fire.
If you took out that building, could the road then sway in a little bit and avoid taking out the line of trees?
Yeah, we would.
You could reconfigure things around a little bit.
Absolutely.
And you also hear us request, you know, open space would be the other key ingredient that I think everybody's pushing for.
I was just telling my son, I mean, if we can move, even if we can move buildings, even, you know, whatever, we'll work with the city, but if we can even move it to save a tree, obviously we'll do that. I agree with, I mean, I don't want to take out, I'm not interested in taking out a bunch of trees. We are going to plant a lot of 25-gallon trees, but if we don't have to take out trees, we won't.
What's the realistic timeline to rework this and have something that you can bring back before the planning commission?
Well, I mean, the problem is, to be honest with you, I mean, I've got 15 guys that are working full-time, and I mean, this was, we've been working on this since last February. We've had, we've submitted applications and been working on this, and we were hoping to come to you two weeks ago, and that got kind of filed up. So we came to you tonight in hoping that, you know, we could, we could move forward. I mean, we're not going to do any more than take that one, that one building out, that's what we're going to do. So that's what I'm proposing tonight. We can bring it back in two weeks and have it, but I mean, that's what we're going to do.
And reconfigure the road so that the trees stay, right? Because if the road is right at the edge, isn't that why the trees all go away?
I don't think, I don't think you're going to, you're still going to eliminate some trees. I don't think you're going to, you're going to keep all the trees. You're going to save a few there, if you could kind of come in and kind of do a little S. But I still think you're going to, you're going to have a problem with a lot of the trees.
Well, then do what you can, right? And see if it satisfies the commission. I mean, you're saying you'll take out a building, create some open space, and do some reconfiguring. You're also hearing that, and agreeing that we'd all like to see more of those mature trees.
Yeah, and I, well, I guess we can come back in two weeks, but I don't, I don't see a lot of changes, other than we're going to have more open space. And maybe we're going to save maybe a few more trees, but it's not going to be a lot. There's definitely going to be more open space, there's no question about that. That's what I'm willing to do. Is there any other questions for me? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering about the possibility of moving some of those units into the areas that are now parking on the outside of the site, rather than on the areas that are now the grassy yard on the inside of the site.
Yeah, I thought about that, but they were all parking areas, and they're up against some older buildings out here, and I, I just didn't like where we were, where the views were and stuff like that, so I decided to do what I did there. So we came up with that design. And so it would, it would be so expensive and so time-consuming now to change it. I mean, it would be, it just wouldn't be worth it for me to change it now. I mean, it just, it'd be like starting all over to go to the outside, and it's just not something I really desire, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Might I ask a question, a point of process? We don't get to hear from the community anymore. Is that how that works?
You know, that's up to the chair, but typically the public hearing, you open it once, and then you close it, and then you have your deliberations and take actions.
I think, I mean, I feel like we've heard enough community input, I feel very clear on how the community and residents feel. I'm trying to find a way to incorporate the owner's willingness to make some changes and find out if there's a motion that could be put forward that includes that language so that we can get to some kind of an agreement on this project this evening.
My hunch is that we're not there as a group, that you wouldn't get the votes, short of seeing a redesign, like, let's just see it.
Yeah, and procedurally, if you did have another motion, you'd have to resolve the first mo, the, well, I guess you could resolve the second motion first. Have to check my procedures out now. We have to, if you're asking for a second motion, I'm going to have to get back to you on what we do there. The only other motion that I think you could entertain, though, would be to condition the project with the applicant's agreement to remove that. You'd be doing it a little bit blind and trusting that the, you know, staff could implement the vision that the planning commission set out, so it's really up to you whether you want them to come back, or whether you trust that with those changes, that they'd be able to modify the project to your satisfaction.
My experience has been that it's very difficult in a meeting like this to redesign a project. And so I think it's much more effective to let the applicant and the engineers and designers working with them to sit down, think about it, and probably come up with better ideas than we could right now, sitting here. So, you know, my inclination would be to vote for the continuation that Judith has made a motion on.
David, with a continuation, you're suggesting that staff would work with the applicants to resolve those issues that were brought up by the planning commission in advance of bringing this project back?
Yes, to the best of our ability. You know, what I heard, I think what I heard was that there was a, you know, that the project could be modified to remove a building and put some chicanes in the road to preserve some trees, and then to look at what other trees that could be preserved. That's the direction from the planning commission. If I've, you know, captured that, then I think I feel like I can do that. If there's something else that hasn't been stated, then I'm not sure what it is.
I think that sounds reasonable to me, and if we can, is, can we get that back at our next meeting? I don't want to...
Yeah, the owner has said that he might be willing to remove one of those buildings in the middle. That wouldn't necessarily allow me to make all of the necessary findings with that small modification. So I'd like not to specify exactly what the design changes would be for our continued hearing and to let the owner and developer work out a more acceptable design and bring it back to us no longer than six months from now.
Can we do that open-ended like that? I mean...
Certainly, you can not continue.
Like to see the project back sooner than later.
Yeah, you can, you don't have to set a date specific. We can renotice the hearing, it would push it out to at least probably, not the next hearing, but the following, at the very minimum. I don't know if the applicant or its agent will be able to, you know, guess at what the commission is interested in seeing. And so unless you gave them some specific criteria, you know, I don't know what I could do to help facilitate a project that would, you know, meet with greater acceptance if, you know, I don't know what the target is. And so if you don't give a clear target, if, I don't know what they're going to be able to do, so. Applicant's agent has something they'd like to add?
If I may, thank you, Director Loyah. Yeah, from our standpoint, we want to work with you, we want to figure out how to meet your needs and make sure that you feel comfortable approving this project. But to this point, we've actually gone through your process, and we've got a recommendation from your staff, professional planners, who say they are willing to recommend approval for these reasons. So if you could give us any kind of feedback related to what you would like to see when we come back, I think that's only fair. Thank you.
Well, is the mechanism for that then creating, generating a list at this meeting? Because how would we do that outside of that?
Yeah, I think so. At least some more specificity around, you know, the conditions under which you would approve a project as a body.
Can I try something? And if you need this to be in a motion, it could be. If we eliminate one building, it immediately creates some negotiable space. If there's any way to slightly nudge things and save some of the trees along the western boundary, I think we'd all feel a lot better, especially if at least the effort was there. If you come back and all that's done is that one building is gone, I don't get the sense there's a lot of momentum for the project here. Beyond that, commission, help me out here, is there something else clearly that we can propose or push?
I mean, I think, I think those are the two things that we can specifically say. I don't see how you change the project to take into account a definition of superior quality or parse out the compatibility issue. I don't see that being, I don't see that that's going to sway us. I think my preference would be to put it to a motion, but I don't want to have the motion fail and then have the project further delayed. So if we can include in the motion to have it continued, that the plan specifies how many or which trees will be saved, and comes back with maybe some use suggestions for that open space that's going to be gained by removing that building, that's probably the best we can do, as far as making a specific, giving a specific direction to the owners.
I'd like to specifically request that the owner explore getting rid of all parking on the interior side of that site. I know you've said that you don't want to do that, but I'd love to see a design that attempts it. And to use that roadway space that would no longer be necessary to be paved, including the 24-foot road, for some open space or communal use. And I realize that you've already provided common spaces above the bare minimum requirement for a standard development in the city. But in this case, because that development has had that lawn space and those trees, and because it will probably be facing some, you know... be facing some, you know, buildup on the other side, I think it's worth attempting to modify the site design in those ways.
Could I ask a question, point of process? So, everything has to be done now? All of our recommendations? I'm honestly pretty rummy. I'm just wondering, like, is there any way that we could send some ideas? I absolutely hear what you're saying, that it is, you need to know. But maybe we could set a date that we would get those back to you as a commission and you can get them to the developer and...
I think we need to make a decision tonight about specifically what direction we need to give the applicants if we're gonna ask them to come back.
One thing we do know is that the applicant and his agent are sitting there counting heads. And at some point, when there's a majority and they feel like they're pretty close to the momentum that's gonna get a yes on this project, then they'll pencil it to that. We, we're not gonna come up with anything that we all agree on right now. It's impossible. So, I think we've, enough said is what it feels like to me, you know?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement. Christian?
Yeah, I think it's a tough, you know, a tough move at this moment. You know, there's definitely some things that they can, you know, take back to the drawing board in regards to keeping trees, you know, as they are in regards of asking for exemptions to our existing land use code. You know, think about the parking aspects as well. You know, there's an assortment of things that we've discussed and deliberated on, which, you know, hopefully they're penciling down and they can essentially come back to us and give us a better product.
And are you comfortable with the direction just to have that building removed and as many trees as can be kept as the specific direction for the project to come back to us for revisiting?
I think it's a good start. Yeah.
John? Then, can we amend your motion, Judith, or to include those two components?
I don't wanna, excuse me, I don't wanna amend my motion to include those things specifically. The owner, developer, has heard what we've said. And I'd love to see what they come up with, given what they've just heard. So, I won't amend my motion. But I think that if we vote on it, it's with the understanding that the developers have heard the discussion that we've just had.
So, you're making, can you restate your motion, then?
I'd like to continue our discussion of this project to a date no longer than six months from now, to give the developer an opportunity to revise their plan and bring it back to us.
And with that sort of broad direction, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Excuse me, we've already had a motion and a second?
Yeah, I believe, wait, seconded it.
Got it. A vote, then? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I ask-
Without hitting the supporting polls. So anyhow, that just struck me as a really good upgrade.
Okay, this, then we're, this motion passed? Ready to bring the chair back?
Okay, so, moving on to our business items, which is considered the Gateway Area Plan. So, considering it's 9:20 at night, shall we just maybe take public comment and then continue this, or?
I would-
I need help. What, how should we handle this? Cause it's so late.
Yeah, I would defer to the chair. I mean, I think that, you know, whether you, you know, the structure of the meeting was designed in a way that would, you know, allow for a little public comment at the end. So, if you wanted to have a time-limited public comment or something to that effect, or open it up to everyone for, you know, three minutes, or however you wish to do that is, I think, appropriate.
I support the idea of public comment, just in case anybody has sat through all of that just to make a comment. But beyond that, we're not gonna be very useful as far as any other problem solving, right?
I got pizzas coming.
So, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we are gonna end up continuing this, obviously, since it's so late. But those of you who have come here and you would like to, we'll accept public comment on the Gateway Area Plan. So, if you'd like to come forward and, but we are going to continue it.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is on the Gateway Plan, so please stop me. I'm serious. It has to do with the use of the SLIDO system for input. I'm very much in favor of public participation, but I want to make sure that the SLIDO input is not used as a definitive measure of anything. It's, I've researched a little bit. It's very easy to hack. I could put in 10 or 20 or 30 or 40 votes pretty easily. With a little bit of work, I could put in 500 or 1,000. So, it's unfortunate. It's a good tool, but it should not be relied on or even mentioned as being representative, in my opinion. It's also a small sampling relative to the number of people in Arcata. I appreciate everything you're doing. I know I may sound harsh sometimes, but I do appreciate what you're doing. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anyone online?
We do have a couple online. Go ahead, Edward? Edward, are you able to unmute? There you go.
I don't recall raising my hand. If I did, it was inadvertent. I'm so sorry.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Go ahead, Jane.
First of all, I want to commend the commission for a very, very thorough discussion, listening to each other and accepting the comments that were made by the citizens and realizing that the existing citizens, the residents, have some right to have a continuation of the quality of life they've had. And when you put these buildings smack up against each other and you cut off their space and their open space, you've really changed the quality of their lives, their lives. I also want to basically reiterate our concerns that we gave at the beginning about the need to set the agenda so we understand which topics are going to be addressed in which order. So, we know, and whether there's going to be public comment after each one. For example, the amenities, the building height, are those separate topics that are going to be dealt with so we can prepare our comments on each one and make those available? So, it would be very helpful to have the agenda be more specific and have some kind of timeframe. I couldn't tell from the Plan West and Ben Noble's whether you were going to be making decisions about that, whether that's something you were going to discuss and vote on tonight, whether to accept it or not. It was totally unclear what that was about. I wanna commend Judith for the extreme amount of work she put into giving you an analysis of the amenities. And I find that, as with everything else, you need to find a way to get a consensus on and value those and rate them and decide which ones are critical and which ones aren't. You need to apply those standards with all of these decisions. So, I just wanna say you've done a tremendous amount of work. I really, I was not going to stick around to listen to this whole presentation, and I did. And I'm really glad I did, because I got to see how you can function. And you do need to give as much guidance as you can to the developer. And I really agree with Ann King Smith's comments. You used to do preliminary review before a developer got all in and spent a lot of money on something so that you could give feedback early on on developments like this. And, I mean, we're giving, with the Gateway Plan, we're having a whole different situation where we have the opportunity to look at examples and decide what we want, and that's form-based code. Well, that doesn't apply here.
Thank you, Jane.
But maybe some of the concepts should. Thank you very much. I'll cut out. You've been great.
Thanks, Jane. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, planning commissioners. There's been a lot of discussion about open space tonight. It is relevant to what I come to talk to you about, which is the L Street Linear Park. Tonight, I asked the planning commissioners to consider the August 2 transportation safety recommendation and the September 20 reconformation. Revised the plan that eliminates the L Street that's being considered for new streets and car traffic. This area is recommended to become a car-free linear park that prioritizes people. For numerous reasons, the L Street Park is a greater use for L Street over a road expansion. The L Street corridor is an existing right-of-way. It won't rely on privately-owned public spaces as an amenity. If no developer chooses amenities, no other parks will be built within the Gateway Area. Presently, there are a number of open spaces along the L Street Rails to Trails corridor to the north, and at the south end of Alliance to Samoa Boulevard, the L Street car park will rely on rail banking of the L Street Rails to Trails and paving over open spaces to the north and open spaces in coastal wetlands to the south, reducing the footprint of a Class 1 trail. Utilizing rail banking for the purpose of road expansion goes against the spirit of the existing Rails to Trails throughout the U.S. The open spaces within the L Street corridor can be enhanced for landscaping and recreation. Rail banking of the L Street corridor for linear park represents a blank slate from Alliance to Samoa Boulevard, offering a long easement of numerous possibilities. The L Street Rails path is the existing artery between the Parks to the north and the Arcata Wildlife Marshland Suite itself. That identifies the major goal for open quality spaces and pathways within 200 feet of every housing unit, as within the Gateway Path. Finally, the L Street Linear Park will offer common spaces and gathering spaces for the infill residents. It will be the welcome mat for the Great Redwood Trail servicing Arcata, Humboldt County, California and beyond. For information and support of this, I recommend the arcatalinearpark.org website, where you can find information about the park and different links to the Yukaias' master plan for their linear park and a number of other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Patricia? Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, I was down in the Bay Area earlier this week and, Jim, can you turn on your phone? And, so, I'm sorry, we have dueling audio here on this end. But, so, it, so, I was down in the Bay Area and on the way back, we drove by Emeryville. And it really looked like they're setback and step-back are, were our amenity and not a requirement. And also looked like developers were not using those amenities, either of those. Emeryville has, I mean, it was jaw-dropping. So, I think form-based codes, we have to get our phone, form-based codes really accurate if this is not gonna look like Emeryville. Was, I don't know if that's what the city was intending, but that's what they got. So, and then also, I was in San Francisco for quite a bit, and there are a lot of shared roads and they call them slow streets, and they are everywhere, as long, along with linear parks. There, San Francisco has an amazing array of linear parks. So, that gets me back to what we had proposed before when we put in, we as a city put in the Rails to Trails path here along L Street. It was proposed to be a linear park along L Street. And I found the Arcata Rails to Trails feasibility study and operations plan of 2010 on the internet. It has since disappeared since I brought it up to Transportation Safety and City Council on the September 20th and 21st. So, I have that PDF. I can give you a copy of it. It's 160 pages. I really hate to waste all that paper, but I will send it your way. And it really goes over, it goes over what was planned for that, for L Street at the time. It was supposed to be a shared-use road. And it had, it's, one of the quotes is, it says, "L Street will be where the city and the trail converge, creating a vibrant community gathering space." And then it also goes on to say, "The one location where Arcata's Rails with trail interfaces, the street grid network of the city, L Street." This is a very low-volume street that almost exclusive, with almost exclusively local traffic. This is the ideal location for a shared-use street that includes Arcata's rail with trail. And it goes on, they have like art installations, food carts, community garden spaces.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And we would love to see that, by the way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think those folks zooming in can hear our beeper, cause we're all muted. So, yeah. So, go ahead, Chris?
Hello, Chris Richards here. It's late. I won't take up much of your time. I really wanted to just thank Judith for her four pages of considerations for the Gateway Area's proposed community benefits program. And I really enjoy the thought that she put into that and kudos to her. I appreciate it very much. I do look forward to other commissioners' verbal or written examination of a similar thought process as we move forward. I think, for me, it's much easier to read something and see it in print and I can engage with it that way. But the way I work, better with engagement on information. But anyway, I hope everyone can move forward with that sort of thing. That would be a wonderful, wonderful thing to see happen. And anyway, thanks again, Judith, and thank you all for your in-depth discussion and involvement tonight. It was a very, very nice watching you all work together and get to where you did. So, anyway, thank you so much and that's all.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry. There are no more public comments.
Okay, so, before I ask for a motion to carry this on, I just wanna say, Judith, to your Gateway Area, your community benefits program, this is invaluable. I read this like three times. This is really good. And then, same with John. John had a really, it was good. So, we have a lot to go on. I'm so sad that we don't get to work on this cause I was ready to roll, but, so we're gonna-
Code or anything else. But, if there's anything that we can do to push that linkage, it feels critical. It just feels like this giant big neighborhood that wants to walk on that trail and that's the Keystone parcel. That's one of the things I really liked about the conditions that we were putting on the previous Craftsman Small Project proposal. So, if- So if there's anything that, any, any ideas or anything the city can do or if the commission needs to send a letter, I don't know. Just let me know.
I thought that was having to go over private property. I thought maybe it was Strombeck, right? We'd have to get an easement over somebody's private property for that, if I recall?
Yeah, and I can just, in brief, you know, certainly we're working with Cal Poly to, to try and honor as many of those conditions as possible, though we don't have, you know, land use leverage, you know, we're, we're trying to partner on those. And on the, I believe you're chair referring to the Cal Poly property of the former Creekside? Is that what you're referring to?
Talking about the Craftsman's Mall.
Craftsman's Mall.
Right? That's what you're talking about?
That is what I'm talking about.
We have, I think we have a connection between the Craftsman's Mall property and public property that we can get a connection.
Yeah, there was in the previous, went right down to that little Jane's Creek Trail or whatever that's called and...
This is not germane to the topic that we've been talking about, but definitely germane to housing. And I know everyone is really busy. I acknowledge that. I'm super excited to see that the Days Inn has a cyclone fence, which means that people are now getting housed. I've heard this and it's just in time before the big rains come. I have a lot of people in the community asking me for updates. They've pointed out that it's been nine months and the community has not received an update. I did find out because I saw it on Facebook and of course I live out there so I can see. But I don't know what's going on with Red Roof Inn except that they have an empty parking lot and whenever I call, it routes me through and then it disconnects me and then I call and it routes me through. So we're hoping that we could find out the status of both projects.
Yeah, just again, in brief, since it's not an agendized item, these aren't intended to be back and forth, but I can tell you that both projects have...
It was communications, I was hoping. Yeah, sorry.
Both projects have, you know, closed on the property deal and have either permits pending or permits issued and both projects are moving forward. They have an eight-month time clock to try and be occupied in order to get a, you know, pretty substantial financial bonus to the award and they're both working to, to meet that. And so the timelines outlined in the, the grant application are still valid.
Any other correspondence or communications or does everybody just want to go home?
I have just one quick one, if I may, because I know the millions of viewers in, in our audience on TV want to know about this, but on October 5th at 3 o'clock, right here in City Hall, in these chambers, we'll be holding a stakeholder meeting for the short-stay vacation rental ordinance, sort of a listening session for revisions to that ordinance. The city council asked for, you know, a couple of amendments and so we want to talk with the community about that. We've notified all the short-stay vacation rental permit holders, but there may be people in the general public that also have some ideas or comments around that. So if you're interested in that, show up here, City Council Chambers, October 5th at 3 o'clock. If you can't make that time, feel free to write us a letter with your thoughts or email.
All right, anything else? Not this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.